Planning and zoning commission meeting for January 19, 2012. It's 12, we've jumped a year. Been a year since we've been here. This evening's rules and procedures are the planning and zoning commission is generally an advisory body to the city council. The city council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission other than site plans. The commission's decision to approve or deny a site plan is the final decision by the city unless the applicant appeals to city council. So you'll need to contact the city clerk or community development department staff, easy enough for you to say, for details on those council hearings. This evening, the applicants will be given 10 minutes to present their request after staff's presentation. Proponents and then opponents will be allowed to speak with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant will then be allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed and after motion, the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be determined to the issue under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed. We have three of those, we'll get to those in a minute. And will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The city of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourage its participation in city government. To better serve you when possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance at area code 515-2834209 should special accommodations be required. Assistant listening devices are also available for meetings in the council chambers. The planning and zoning commission meetings are also broadcast on MediaCom cable channel 97-1 or on channel 86 for digital service customers. The broadcast is also streamed live in real time on the Des Moines, the city of Des Moines' website at www.dmgov.org. You'll need to click the watch live link for those discussions. Minutes. First of all, we have a quorum. All right. We got any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. You're abstaining?
Abstain.
Yep, okay. I'm going to bring up the consent portion of the agenda tonight and go through that real quickly, find out if anybody is here in opposition. First item is a request from our legacy properties represented by Timothy and Marcy Johnston for review and approval of a site plan under design guidelines in NPC districts on property located at 2142 Indianola Avenue to allow a 7,200 square foot, single story addition to the existing Little Scholars preschool. Is there anyone here in opposition to that item? Opposed to it? Okay. Item number two, which is also on the consent agenda, is a request from Thermo King Sales and Service represented by Daniel Seren-- forget it. To rezone property located at 4875 Hubble Road. Is there anyone in opposition to that particular item? Opposition? All right, seeing none. The third item is a request from JZJL Holdings LLC doing business as QCSA Direct represented by Joseph Zorlik to rezone property located at 1700 East Aurora Avenue. The subject property is owned by the Nellis Corporation, Ellis I. Levett Trust and Wells Fargo Bank and a trustee. Is there anyone here in opposition to that particular item? Likewise, seeing none. Is there a motion? Greg, move the consent agenda. Any discussion?
If anything else on the--
Oh, okay. Is there anyone else that has any other items? You want to move on to consent, I'm sorry. You want to try five? All right. There's a request to move item number five onto consent, I'm sorry. Request from Wellmark Holdings, Inc., owner represented by Matt Brown for vacation of a segment of Linden Street running 223.5 feet west of 14th Street to allow for redevelopment of a eastern portion of the block for passive recreational space with a pedestrian path circuit. Anyone here to speak in opposition or in opposition to that item? You're here in opposition, sir? Okay, all right.
Dan, how about seven and eight?
All right. Well, seven or eight I'm opposed to, but what about seven? Requests from Grandview University represented by Kent Henning to rezone property located at 2919 East 14th Street and 1517 Hull Avenue. Is there anyone here in opposition? Opposition to that item? Anyone here? You are, okay. All right. So one through three. Greg's your motion? Any--
I'm in opposed eight.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. All right, let's go to number four. Number four is request from Hubble Realty Company represented by Steve Nieber--
Nieber.
Nieber. Sorry, Steve, I always mess it up. To amend the Summersfield PUD conceptual plan on property located at 4605 Hubble Avenue to define the layout and design of track three of the PUD conceptual plan to allow development of 20 row home dwelling units. Wow. Apparently, they were here for one--
You were all here for consent items?
Yeah.
One, two, or three?
The daycare.
Oh, okay.
Oh, they were in favor of the daycare. Okay, all right. Great. Eric, are you presenting on this one?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm going to hand around a packet of cards and letters that were received on this item. There's duplication within the year because some people sent a card, some people sent a letter, some people sent both. So if you see some duplication between the cards and the letters, relax, that's because they did, they sent more than one communication, so.
Should you start half at one end and half at the other?
If you want to. I'd like to have them collected together at the end if I can.
Yeah, try and keep them all together if you can because we will have to forward this on to council. I think we made a copy of everything already just in case something gets--
I was just suggesting to start half on one end and half on the other.
There, basically, one is a form letter, majority of it is a form letter. As Eric did point out, we did also receive, some people submitted a form letter as well as a card. And then there are, I think, two or three individual handwritten letters in the pack too. So we tried to put those handwritten ones on top, the cards on top, and then the beginning of the form letters, so. Just as you go through that.
So to get you oriented to the site, this is the Summersfield PUD, which, if you can see the yellow outline, that is the entire boundary of the PUD area. A portion of the single-family component has been platted here on the south end, East Merced and East Valdez Drive, and a little stub of East 48th Street. The remaining portion is yet to come in the form of a final plat and is not developed yet. This portion here is designed under the PUD for stormwater management purposes. This tract here is to be, was sold to the school and is under the school's ownership as part of the school to the, kind of wrapped around the school here. So the subject of this amendment is tract three, which is this area up here at East 46th Street and Hubble Avenue on the southeast portion. What I'm going to do is, I have photos if you want to see them, and so I won't show them unless you ask to see them. If you need to see something, because we'll try to keep things moving along here. The site sketch or the concept plan change is based on the fact that, at the time it was originally approved, Summersfield did not identify the specific configuration of tract three. So when we look at this area here, tract three, the original conceptual plan defined this as an area that would allow C2 uses. It precluded billboards, adult entertainment businesses, taverns, and vehicle display lots. But other than that, it allowed for any other use in C2 and under those limitations. However, because it didn't show the configuration, the condition was that the, when the configuration was known, that that would come back through as an amendment to the PUD. So that's why this is being brought in front of you and the city council. If I'm going to zoom in a little bit, I'll let the developer get more specific on their proposal, but essentially, the layout that's being proposed has drive access on both Hubble and East 46th Street. It's in three pods of seven, seven, and six with parking in between. The front elevations of the units will face to the outside of the park and away from the park. And so the back door, so to speak, is kind of in the center of the development for all of the units. And this will face towards the church to the south, and these will face toward the Summersfield had established design guidelines for materials on single-family but had not established anything architecturally if there was any multifamily to be developed. So one of the things that this amendment also has to do is define what the architecture of the units is going to be. It may be difficult to tell, but you have gabled fronts on the units with front door access to each of the units, shingled roof, hardy board overlap siding, and there's also a shake hardy board material under the eaves and in some of the accents on the back. The back is generally all hardy board. The front sides have brick elements on the main level. You can see the darker part on the main level, that would be a brick type material. The other portion would be a little overlap hardy board. You know, it doesn't read very well in black and white on this drawing, but the point here is that the material requirements of this proposed amendment actually are in excess of what was allowed for the single-family houses in the development as they were approved, which also allowed for a vinyl type siding and didn't have minimum brick requirements established for them. So this amendment would specifically be limited to the restriction of this elevation that was provided as part of the conceptual plan amendment.
Eric?
Yes?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but when that planned unit development was originally approved, the single-family houses, it was, there were conservation elements to the subdivision where they had conservation easements, I think, on the rear of the yards. Were those still in there? I know that discussion, I know that was part of the discussion of the commission at the time as to why we did not require the minimum kind of architectural requirements that we've asked for on other single-family--
Yeah, some of the trade-off, I think, at the time was that some of the investment was going to be put toward more conservation type improvements for drainage at the perimeters and in the rears of the single-family dwelling units, bio swales and surface kind of conservation stormwater management design, which was not traditional. It was kind of a new concept at that time.
So it was a recognition of the price point that they were trying to hit with the single-family residential units in exchange for some of the conservation elements that they were proposing? So there was a conscious decision by the commission and council at that time to--
Yeah, and there was also a tiered approach to the types of housing, whether it be one, two-story, or two-and-a-half story. The minimum areas were established, and you could see that in this, if you look on the main page, if you look under the architectural standards for single-family, you can read through what was, what was established based on different single-family housing configurations.
Will, jump question.
I have a question, please, Eric. So the drawings that we have of the single-family dwellings are for our information and have nothing to do--
They were already approved in the original PUD. They haven't been proposed to be modified.
Eric, so everybody's clear, what, if you look at the layout, the conceptual plan, it shows the preliminary conceptual plan and it shows the street layout, what we're looking at is tract three. Is that right?
Right. The specific request is to amend to define this tract.
Right.
For the most part--
Everything else--
Everything else has been left as it was originally approved with the PUD conceptual plan.
Anything else?
I was going to say that staff does recommend approval of the requested PUD, subject to providing a more specific discussion of the stormwater management strategy for tract three, labeling the public utility and pedestrian easements on tract three and giving, matching the typical landscaping symbols to meet the requirements that will be imposed under the C2 landscaping requirements on that tract as well. And then a reference that they will comply with tree mitigation, although I should point out, it's not anticipated that they'll have to disturb any trees. Most of the foliage on this site--
Non-existent.
--is limited at the edges and if you can see the aerial, you might see a little bit here on the east edge and on the south edge. So in all likelihood, they're probably not going to be required to mitigate anything, but if they do, they'll be subject to that.
Eric, one final thing. If the commission is looking for a comparable product, I think they, virtually the same product was proposed on two occasions, recommended by the commission for Forest Avenue location, so for comparison purposes.
Any other questions? CJ?
I just have a question. Eric, you referred to the value of the current homes there. Can you just give me an estimate on those and what the proposed value of the--
I think you have a tiered approach, so certainly, some of them are entry-level and there's others that are more substantial. I don't think there's any, and you might ask Hubble that question as to what their target market would have been, but in the observation and looking at what's there now is there's a blend of entry-level in the 175 to, probably up to the mid 200,000 to 300,000 range on a couple of them, so.
And my second question is probably for Hubble also, is the proposed sale price of the townhomes, of the proposed--
I don't believe they're planning to sell them.
What?
You can ask Hubble, but their, their intention is--
Rent them?
Their intention is to provide a rental property here. There's no, there's no, nothing in the zoning would establish whether they're rental or non-rental.
Eric, I had one question. On these, if you look at the fronts on these properties, are they going to vary the, vary the color schemes so that we don't have a cookie cutter look?
I think you could ask them to do that. That wasn't something that was recommended or proposed.
All right. Any other questions? Anything else, Eric?
I did want to show you--
If you have a consent app, that's what I was going to ask next.
And at this time, I wasn't able to get a calculation put together to determine, it's possible it might be on that fringe of being the 20%. The way it's looked at, it's looked at both within the PUD as a calculation and then at within 200 feet. The line you see here is actually shown at 250, so we would have to do a, we would use our GIS and then determine what those areas are within the 200 feet of the boundary to see if we would trigger a six out of seven vote for the city council.
Eric, let me ask you something on, on this. Wow, that's weird. The ones that are labeled number 11, 3, 9, 8, are those owned by the--
Yeah, the applicant--
Developer?
Owns a good portion of the, the land within the PUD itself still, yeah.
So that's what we've got to figure out on?
Well, the way, the way this, the code is set up is we do a calculation for within the area, and then we also do it for within the 200 feet of the area. And those are two separate calculations.
Mike, just one more.
Yeah, I just want to put out, a majority of these cards and letters were received today, this afternoon's mail was delivered, so we literally were marking the map at 5:00 tonight, so we did not have the opportunity to calculate the 20%. That will have to be done prior to the city council meeting, and that has tentatively been scheduled for Monday evening, the 23rd of January. Council set the hearing at their last meeting in January.
Okay. Any other questions? Is that all you need, Eric?
At this time, I don't have anything unless there's any more questions.
Could you pull this, go back to the other--
Can you have your mic on?
What, I'm sorry.
The M1, right south of Broadway there, that says frontage roads. What is that?
This is mini warehousing, and these are the flex kind of office light industrial. I believe one of them's a tractor implement or a truck.
So in this--
So you've got, these are mostly your light industrial kind of--
So in this area, there are no multifamily dwellings?
This area here is a PUD. There's an area right in here that's approved for multiple family into the west, you know, as you go down Hubble here, there's other existing developed--
Right.
--multiple-family properties.
Okay. Thank you.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Will you come forward? Please give us your name and address. Let me guess, you're Steve, right?
I'm Steve, and it is--
I apologize for butchering your name.
No, that's fine. Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I-- Steve Nieber with Hubble Realty Company, 6900 West Town Parkway, West Des Moines. I have with me tonight Brian Schiffler with Schiffler Associates, our architect, and Doug Saltscaver, our civil engineer, and also Russ Frazier, the president of Anowim, if we have any questions for him. We're working with Anowim to develop this project. It is 20 row homes. As Eric described it, it is going on a piece of ground that is zone C2. We are not asking to rezone the property. This is an allowed use for this zoning. But as Eric also said, as part of the original PUD, site plan was not developed for this site, so it was requested we come back when we did have a site plan to present. We've been marketing this property as commercial since we did the plat, which has been probably four or five years at least, with no interest from commercial users. So we're trying to deliver a product to the market that we think they'll accept. This is a product similar to what we developed on Forest Avenue. They are individual row homes. They will have geothermal heat pumps. They will be built to Energy Star standards. They'll have hardy siding, not vinyl. They'll have brick. The amenities will include a garden for the community members, a playground, and each unit will have in-home washer and dryers. So it is being developed to be really maintenance-free and to have a high level of amenities. It is a $4 million investment by Hubble in Anowim in this community, which I think's pretty significant, which if you divide it out, that's about over $200,000 per unit is what the project cost will be. So these are not inexpensive units. Just so you, I think you maybe have a pretty good handle, but this is the site we're talking about. This is an existing detention area that will always be detention area. There is a church just to the south of this site. There is the Southeast Polk Delaware Elementary School, and then there is the Summersfield Development. We are not proposing to change anything in the single-family. We're just talking about this commercial piece up along Hubble. I'll let Schiffler, Brian Schiffler, go over some of the architectural features, and then I can answer other questions too.
I'm Brian Schiffler, Schiffler Associates, 4717 Grand Avenue. I think Eric did an excellent walkthrough of the project, and so I will sort of speed through some additional points. These are two-story homes, three-bedroom units. They've got a front door and a back door. The front door is into a living area. The back door is into more or less a country kitchen with live-in dining. We've got a bathroom downstairs, mechanical, et cetera. Going upstairs, you can see the three bedrooms. We have a master bedroom, a large bedroom, and a smaller bedroom. It's anticipated that the maximum occupancy of this unit would be five, five people. I'd like to point out the roof because that's relevant for the elevations. It's a simple, it's a simple gable structure where we add pediments, and we push those pediments in and out. I'm lucky in that this is basically a reworking of a project that we designed a couple of years ago for 22nd and Forest. It's rare that architects get second swings at a project, but we built a successful 16 flex at 22nd and Forest, and I truly got a chance to make it better. So we talked our clients into altering the facade and the floor plan to make them prettier. And much to your, much to your question, Mr. Chair, I'll be with you in a second. We have done everything we can to break up the facade. We have a plain roof slope on each building, each of the three buildings, but they face the interior circulation. Our pediments face out to the street, and they also face back to the neighborhood. We are aware that there are single-family homes in the vicinity, and so we wanted to be sensitive to that. And in an effort to break up the facades, clearly the pediments were added, the facades were pushed in and out. And as you can see here, we're proposing four different accent colors to be used on the projecting pediments. In addition to that, we go back and forth with two different brick colors trying to break down the facades. I will say that the second attempt at this, we have gotten more sophisticated. We've figured out how to put accent trim ornamenting house letters and doorbells. It's something that you wouldn't normally get to do with just a first pass. So I'm pretty proud of the way these will look. I think that they'll be a strong addition to the neighborhood.
Any questions? CJ?
I have a question. When you first developed this Summersfield development--
Yes.
--what did you tell those folks when they purchased there? Did you tell them that it was going to be all single-family homes? Or did they, were they under the advice that there may be some multifamily moving in here? Or what kind of a sales pitch did they get, I guess, is what I'm asking?
The, the single-family lots are staying single-family. The area we're talking about is commercial, which is detached from the development itself. That's why I wanted to show you the map, so you could see the separation that we have. We have not made any representations. The PUD has stood as the PUD. I mean, it's own commercial. We haven't told them any other than that. Okay, that, it is commercial.
So when they purchased initially, there was no inkling to them that there would be multifamily add to, added on to the PUD? Is that, is that correct?
Honestly, Hubble doesn't have a lot of interaction with the homeowners.
Well, the real estate agent does.
The real estate agent does. You're right. You're correct. You're correct. And we're not, it's a listing firm. But the real estate agent is told what the plans are for the development. It's an allowed use under C2, so I guess, I'm trying to answer your question, but I'm trying to understand--
The PUD is on file at the city?
I understand all of that. I'm just asking, what were the people told when they--
And I wasn't part of that conversation.
Okay, so they would have to tell us that then?
That real estate agents would have to, would have to say.
Or the owners.
I mean, we, we've never said it was going to be anything other than what it was zoned for.
Okay. Thank you.
Will?
Steve, I'm looking at the color rendering up on the screen and also the black and white that we have here.
Yes.
And the east elevation and the west elevations as shown on the black and white differ from the one that are shown on the color rendering in terms of the fenestration, and there's also a door, unless I'm reading the drawings incorrectly. Would you talk about that? And if so, are there other changes between the two drawings?
I'll let Brian answer that, they're his drawings.
The drawings should be very similar. The potential confusion could be, there was a base drawing used at 22nd and Forest, and that was, that had evolved into this drawing.
So which is which?
The drawing I'm showing you today will be the building that's built.
The colored one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other changes?
No, sir.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Steve, are these going to be considered owner-occupied?
They're rental units.
Okay.
They will be rented.
Tax credit?
They are tax credit.
Section 8?
They're not Section 8. They're Section 42.
42s.
So, for instance, I will give you some income guidelines that we're under-
Like Malborn's?
Except the income levels have gone up. Actually, you can make over $31,000 as a single. So they're 60% of the median income, but they're not Section 8. They're Section 42.
Follow-up, Tim?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward. In favor of the application. Seeing none. Is there anyone here in opposition to the application? Please come forward. If there are a lot of you, we want you to line up on the wall and come forward, give us your name and address. Ma'am, just step right on forward here and right up to the podium. Just right up here and then line up on the wall. That's fine. Go ahead.
Don Hanson at 4205 East 48th Street. I was one of the first people that bought a lot in this subdivision. I bought it from Hubble Realty. I was under the assumption this was all single-family dwelling. There's never been a sign out there that this was C2. There were some iffy signs out there. Since we've protested this, and I think you'll see that by the letters you received and the cards you received, signs have disappeared. But basically, all the signs that have been out there ever since we bought was single-family dwelling. No one out there ever thought there would be any multifamily dwelling out there.
Okay. CJ, do you have a question?
I guess that's, you said assumption, you were the, under the assumption, but I was just wondering if you were told that by anyone, that that would be single-family in the whole area?
Originally, I was told all the way around it was going to be a single-family dwelling. And the area that has not been developed yet, where there are sewer and water put into, was supposed to be higher-end housing than the original plat, I think it was 72 or 74 lots. There was nothing ever said regarding multifamily. It doesn't make any difference if it was rental or condos or whatever. That was never imparted to me.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, give us your name and address.
I'm Jan Murphy. I live at 4729 East Valdez Drive. I've been there about three years. No, maybe more like two. I don't know. I bought mine through Hubble Realty, and I told my real estate agent I was trying to find a nice neighborhood to live in. The, let's see. Someone here raised a question, asking about the conservation work that's been done. My house, the back, the backside of it is right at Aurora, and none, I don't believe anything there has yet been done, as has had been proposed, because I called them before, and they said, oh, they're going to be doing stuff back there, but nothing has happened that I know of. Let's see. We only learned that these were going to be rentals Tuesday of this week, when this group called a meeting for us. We feel that, that a renter doesn't have the investment in their home that a homebuyer would, whether it's multiple families or whatever. And, and we feel like renters can just drop it and leave, you know. They, they told us we should feel better, because they'll be taking care of this for 15 years. But I plan on being there much longer than 15 years. When, when they quit managing it, then we're, we're left to whatever can happen to us. Right now, it's, it's like a small little town. They're at Aurora Avenue. Kids go by on bicycles, and their parents walk little kids with strollers. And, and we feel like it's a very, it's a very nice neighborhood, and we don't think that that will, will help our values at all, on top of what we've already lost due to the, to the recession. Let's see. The, the signs out there, even in that spot that they're talking about, until this last week, all said, "Single-family homes," underlined with an arrow, but it was right in the middle of the lot, and you didn't really know where that, that they were talking about hours. And homes were underlined. We've been told that these, some people consider these as homes, that we believe them to be standalone homes. That's why, that's why we bought there. We thought it was going to be a, a nice neighborhood. And I, a lot of us are very opposed to this, especially even, even finding out it was going to be rentals. That's a biggie, you know. I used to rent to people and, and apartments. They'd just move in and out, little apartments. But boy, when you got into a house or something, they, they didn't do it justice. I mean, I felt like when they get to the point that they need a home, a home, and they can't, and they don't, can't afford one, very often there were some real problems. And I had one home that was almost condemned because of what the renters had done inside of it with their children. So I just think homeowners care a lot more. They have an investment in their home. That's their future, and they care, whether there are a lot of them in a row or one at a time.
Thank you, ma'am. Wait, wait, wait. There's a question over here.
First of all, people have to start somewhere, so not everyone can afford a home. I'm happy that Des Moines offers a variety of housing types for people. As I read the cards, most of the cards that I'm reading in opposition have the desire that the area remain single-family. But "remain single-family" is repeated over and over again. This commission approved the PUD of this property, that allowed this property to be commercial, so it is zone commercial. I'm curious, do you have a preference if this property were to be a gas station versus an apartment, or any other type of retail, since it is zone commercial today?
Well, let me back up a minute to your question. The, I wanted to address the part about, most of us are novices. We don't know what a PUD3 means. I mean, when we bought our home, nobody even suggested that that would be the situation. Even if, if we worked in, in your department, maybe we'd be more aware of it, but we weren't. We didn't, we didn't know that that was zone commercial, because we keep seeing all these signs saying "single-family homes." But I believe that it's very possible that something there in the commercial, along the commercial line, could be just as beneficial to us. There's a, there's an area like this in Altoona that I've been in north, and I was looking for a place to live, and there were thugs out there on the street. And I thought, oh, I can't live back here. And that's what, that sort of thing frightens us. We don't know what's going to, you know. We know when you invest in a home, your chances of, and these people can, can buy these. I mean, if they bought them, then we would have, we would feel much better about how they, that this would be their neighborhood, too, not just any place that they can come or go. Did I answer your question? Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions?
I can speak to experience that Hubble will have a huge investment. If he said $5 million, they have an investment. And Anowim Housing is probably one of the most professional management groups that the city has, as far as helping Section 42 people. They, they have a project. I, I just wanted to kind of put a view at ease. The product that would be out there and the people that'd be out there are pretty, pretty well screened. It's not, not like it used to be.
What happens at the end of the 15 years when they quit managing it? I plan on being there 15-
They still have an investment in that property.
Okay, maybe I can't live 50 more years, but anyway, they still have an investment in the property. Okay, that's, and do we have any kind of warranty that they won't just sell off that investment, or that we're just stuck with whatever? I, I know, but there's no guarantees in life, but-
Pretty right.
Are there any other?
Any other questions? Thank you. Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Rendell Childs, 4238 East 48th Street. I agree with some of what my neighbors have said here, but I also wanted to bring up a couple of other things. The location for this housing just kind of seems odd and uncharacteristic. I guess first where the other, the other properties are. I'm not even sure. Des Moines provides bus service out that far. And then, if you look here, the proposed areas here where they have the sidewalks drawn, there's a, there's a school here, a very highly populated school. There's a lot of kids that go here, and they, they have bus service through Southeast Polk School District. This intersection here at East 48th Street and Hubble Avenue is prone to many accidents. And I see they're going to add another driveway, or they're proposing to add another driveway to the east here. I can only assume that that would cause even further traffic problems. And I know at one point in time, there was some, I've lived in the area for almost five years now, and I know there was some equipment out there monitoring the traffic. Usually, what happens before, traffic lights go in. At this meeting the other day, it was my understanding that there would no longer be any opportunity for traffic lights to go on. So I have, I have concern for, for the, the kids that go to the school, mainly because I'm going to have two of them here in a year. And other than that, I mean, it's just, it just seems like an odd, odd spot to, to put this type of housing. That's all I got.
Any questions?
Eric, can you clarify, the PUD catty corner from that site also calls for multifamily?
That's senior.
We, I guess, the difficulty is our zoning code doesn't regulate between age or renter versus owner occupied. It's either multifamily or single-family, so-
We were told it was a senior living the other night at our neighborhood meeting.
Senior multifamily housing is proposed on the northeast corner, correct?
I don't, I don't, I didn't even know what was the other night.
Use is multifamily.
Yes.
The, the individual management or, or management of tenants is different on that property, but it is approved for multifamily on that corner?
Yeah, traffic engineering's looked at the spacing of where signalized locations and where turn, left turn lanes might go in all along the Hubble. Or, I think the placement of the drives is about as optimal as it can be. Without, without two egresses, it becomes a fire protection consideration, because then you've got to provide a turnaround for fire apparatus.
Well, I mean, if you've ever been in the area, either morning, I guess I'd say rush hour, or evening rush hour, there's a lot of traffic that goes through there. The intersection to the east here also has its own issues, but, you know, once a month, you see an accident there. And I don't, and I can only assume that putting housing there on the corner, especially with the, the drive setup, would add to the, to the issues with traffic flow in that area.
Will?
I'd like to follow up Mike's question, that the, the property is currently zoned commercial. If you had, and, and Hubble is authorized to construct a commercial property there, which would your druthers be if you had the druthers? Would you prefer to have it multifamily or commercial?
Commercial.
And your reasoning?
Well, commercial is, is a wider range, a wide array of what, what can possibly go there. I mean, I understand it can be an apartment complex, but it also could be a bookstore. So it just kind of leaves open the possibility of something a little more neighborhood-friendly going in, I would say. Can't be a bar, there's a school there.
That was one of the restrictions.
Can't be a Walmart. There's a Walmart right at, right up the road.
Could be a gas station.
Could be a gas station, but the gas station wouldn't be allowed to sell alcohol, from my understanding, so I doubt it'd be a gas station.
CJ, Jamie?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Eric. This, this property went through, this area went through a forced annexation. Could you tell me what year that was?
The PUD itself was a voluntary prior to that. That came in in 2005.
Okay.
So that was re-zoned. 2009 was the, was the, was the overall annexation. This came in, in 2005, and then that went through the PUD process almost immediately following the annexation of the property to, to find the Summersfield plant. So, and then they, there was another small annexation to annex a little piece of street at the very south end of this development that was incorporated in as well, so.
Okay, and just a quick question on, do you feel like the city has fulfilled its obligation to these folks when they were annexed? I mean, with private, I mean, with the proper fire, police, and protection and that sort of thing? Do you have any read-on that?
I don't think I'm ready to comment on something like that at this point, for the whole area, on the annexation. I mean, I don't, I don't have that analysis. I mean, we're, it's been annexed in and-
The area is either served by the city or under a contract with the, the local fire districts to provide fire service for the areas, so.
Okay, so they have adequate police protection in?
We've been providing police, police serves this area. The City of Des Moines Police now serves the area. From a fire protection standpoint, it's, to generalize the entire annexation, I can't, in some portions of the annexation, the involuntary annexation, the city leave is still contracting with those township fire departments for fire service in some areas.
Volunteer fire services. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none. CJ, do you need some rebuttal time?
I guess I'd like to answer a few of the points that were brought up and maybe make some clarifications. One was, and I think it was referenced, we did have a neighborhood meeting Tuesday, and I think it was a good discussion. The discussion really centered around, not around, you know, fences or berms or buffering or driveway locations, which we would, you know, listen to and negotiate. It was more about single-family or commercial, multifamily. So it's kind of been presented that it's an all-or-nothing situation for us. I will say, we're bringing forward a project that is, again, allowed by the zoning. It'll be a $4 million investment by us. The units will be over $200,000 per unit, which is a high cost. And it's a low-density project. This is right at just over seven units per acre. Per the zoning, we could do 17 to 21 units per acre. So we're proposing a town home-type density. Regarding the 15 years, that came up in the meeting, and I want to clarify that. I was asked, how long will this be a tax credit project? And I said, the contract initially is 15 years. We have guarantees, Hubble, everybody, by, for 15 years. After that, they asked what would happen. Well, there's two things. One, it can drop out of the program, become a market rate project, which is possible. Or two, a lot of times, people put them back in and get re-credits and rehab them and bring up the maintenance items, if there are any. So there's two ways it can go, but we're, 15 years is the time of the initial contract. That, I just want to clarify, that's how the 15 years was referenced, and that's the context. The signs, that really bothers me, because it came up at the meeting, and I want to, I want to show a couple of examples, because we did some research, if you can zoom in on this. This was Google Earth. I printed it off before I came. The image is from June 5th of 11. It's kind of hard to see, because it's dark, but there's basically three signs on here, if you zoom in on Google Earth. And I'll show you what those signs read. Here's one of them. To me, this is pretty clear. There's an arrow. We're talking about Summersfield. It's down the road, and that's where we're talking about single-family homes. It's a directional sign. We are not trying to mislead anybody. This is a picture that Ashley signed that's on the site. You can see in the background is the CB Richardalls Hubble Commercial Sign. That is the commercial sign listing this for sale as commercial property. That's there. Here's the other sign on the, on the, "Builder Lots Available, One Block Down the Road." Directional sign. So I just want to be clear, we did not mislead anybody that this was going to be single-family, nor would it ever be single-family, nor would we ever do that. That's not Hubble's reputation. So I would invite you to go out there tomorrow and look at these signs. One last point. We did, also in the meeting with the neighbors, it came up about the school, which we normally don't contact them ahead of doing something like this, but since it was brought up, we did contact the school, Delaware Elementary, talked to the assistant to the principal, and they do not have any concerns about overcrowding or about accommodating this development. So that is not a concern. So that is not a concern. Just want to put that out there.
Any questions? Will?
Steve, from the aerials that we've seen here, and, and knowing the area in a, in a general way, there's a lot of, there's a fair amount of undeveloped land in the area. You, correct me if I'm wrong, you said that you had had no interest from a buyer in terms of the, the commercial development?
Yeah, actually, I was, I correct myself. It's 2005, as, as Eric mentioned, we did the PUD, so it's been just up to seven years that we have had no interest from any commercial buyers.
What do you think the opportunity would be for the property as a commercial property with the upbuilding of the rest of the area? Say in five years from now?
We were marketing this property, Will, while we were in a robust, commercial time. Old economy, as we talk about it in the real estate industry. We're in the new economy, and we still didn't have any interest. So I guess my answer is, I think we've given it a fair chance of being a productive piece of ground in the City of Des Moines under a commercial zoning with a commercial use. The market didn't accept it. We're trying to still use the piece, put it in service, and stay within the allowable zoning.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We have a motion. Will's moving staff. Ted's moving staff. Timmy, you're moving staff too? We got the whole right side. Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Dan, what kind of property taxes does this development generate? Do we know that, or will it?
And frankly, I don't know that we're entitled to consider that.
Oh, I just wanted.
I, I just wanted to let you know.
Okay, I know, we just.
I did some research in the past, and that's not a grounds for, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on your outlook. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Pose same sign. Acclamation, Kathy.
Just to confirm, the city council hearing on the item is scheduled for Monday, the 23rd of January. The council hearing is held in this same, same room. Hearing begins at 5:00 PM. Council meeting starts at 4:30, but the hearing starts at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five. Request from Wellmark Holdings, represented by Matt Brown, for vacation of a segment of Linden Street running 223.5 feet west of 14th Street to allow for redevelopment of the eastern portion of the block for passive recreational space with a pedestrian pass circuit. Eric, you presenting on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Again, I've got photos. If you feel like you want to have a look at those, I'll try to stick to the basics here and then work from that if you need more information. This is the second consideration of this similar type requests by the P&amp;Z. This is coming back to you with a revision in the fact that additional property was brought into the mix in terms of what was adjoining the portion of Linden Street right away that was proposed for vacation. And right now, basically everything east of this point, or I'm sorry, east of this point, would be looked at for vacation purposes. This is a diagram that would show how the property would be laid out. One of the things we're, in our recommendation, is that they have an outlet off the end of the street to Ingersoll Avenue to allow for the fact that we might need through traffic movement to maneuver larger vehicles through. Right now, Linden is a one-way that goes, comes from Ingersoll and goes to 14th Street, so this would be revised under this scenario to allow for two-way to go back out onto And that would be in the event that, I'm sorry, that would be in the event that it, this wouldn't be provided. Right now, Wellmark is proposing to provide that. So staff's analysis of this, we reviewed it, and we're recommending approval of the vacation. We want to ensure that we're reserving easements for anything that has to stay through here, water mains, things that are in place that won't be modified as part of the construction of the site. Provision of a turnaround at the east terminus or a provision of a public access to an adjoining Provision of an easement or turnaround or access driveway off the east terminus of Linden. And again, they're showing this, so we would ask for, if they're going to provide this, we would ask for an easement so that the members of the public could egress back to one of the adjoining streets. In this case, it would be Ingersoll Avenue. Conversion of the remaining segment of Linden from one-way traffic to two-way traffic if the public access drive is not provided. So if they decided not to build this, this should be changed to a two-way scenario. And then provision of a recorded covenant that requires anything, any interim or permanent use on the requested right-of-way to be in conformance with a development plan approved by the city council. My understanding is that they would present something of this nature to the city council for that consideration. And I would pass, we did receive one letter, and I'm, the property right here is to the west of where the vacated area would be.
Eric, I think we did get one additional call on this. I believe that the subway has deliveries that come from Linden Street.
And that would be on.
And so maybe the applicant can clarify exactly how that, that drive, what they're actually proposing, and, and is that a two-way drive, or what standard will it be constructed to? Because I believe they have a panel truck, or at least a potential semi that makes deliveries there that would need to be accommodated, so.
I don't have anything else unless there's questions.
Any questions? Thank you. We're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is the applicant present?
Joanne has a question.
Oh, Joanne, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
The piece behind the subway is shown separate, so I'm wondering.
This is the, the pen would be pointing at the property that the subway sits on.
Okay, what's right next to it, then? That little?
If you want to see the aerial, that'd be a little easier to get a sense.
There's a parking lot.
Does, does that parking lot belong to the person?
This parcel goes all the way through the.
Okay, what about the one to, would be on my right?
Your right?
As I'm looking at it there, that property there, right there?
This is part of the subway property.
Yeah.
Right, that's the people that.
That's the piece I'm wondering about. Does that belong to the piece in?
Yeah, this is part of Wellmark's. The, where my pen is pointing is, would be that corner.
Okay, so we're not talking about anything that's going to be blocked in or anything from, because my, my little map here isn't very.
No, yeah, it's, and it's so tight and everything's hard to read on small maps, but.
Okay, so.
Everything that Linden would remain a public street on that portion, which provides access to any other property owner.
Okay.
Will?
Eric, would you go back to the aerial, please? There's, I think the, isn't it Economy Rental that has the, the little building? Put your, your pen up.
Try to zoom in a little bit better.
Yeah.
This property here?
No, next to it, here to the east.
Oh, I thought it was over here.
Down, where the little black box is. Is that, is that, was that Economy Rental or Economy Enterprise Rent-A-Car? Is that building gone?
This building was torn out, I believe. And so this, yeah, these aerials are a little bit dated in that, basically, anything that Wellmark owns is cleared now.
And Wellmark owns it all then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, is the applicant present? Eric, please come forward, give us your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Matt Brown, Wellmark, 1331 Grand Avenue. A little bit of history on this, probably, if I could use Eric's drawings. What you see here, these three parcels, and the parcel up on Ingersoll were acquired as part of the land acquisition for the Wellmark project. So we didn't purchase the properties in intention of doing any development. It was just kind of a byproduct. Through the course of time, Mike Brown, his widow, sold us the Enterprise building. They, she offered it to us, we purchased it, and subsequently, we've also purchased the Iowa Health Foundation. They've decided to relocate for their own reasons. And so we have purchased all three north of Linden and the three south of Linden. We have all in our ownership right now. What you see here were the construction trailers that were used during the construction process for Wellmark, which have been since removed. And we've also demoed what used to be Howard Martin and also Enterprise. So we have six parcels. The area that we're asking to be vacated is the portion of Linden Street that abuts only those parcels. And then this map. The first, our first round of bringing this to planning and zoning, we weren't quite, we did not have ownership of Iowa Health Foundation. We wanted to, our intent all along has been to create a contiguous park feature. We have no plans for development, which is part of our submission to the city. Our plan is essentially to make it one contiguous park. In the first submission, we ran into some issues with turnaround access out, respecting Eichner's property that has a subway today, also Scotty's Autobody. And respecting them, we've worked on a new solution. Actually, we've met with both face-to-face. This solution is to bring, continue the one-way out onto Ingersoll. We have worked with Snyder, who did the rework on their, on the High Street-Ingersoll, to check elevations to make sure we can build a road that's consistent to city standards for slope and curve. So our intent is to continue the one-way road that's there today all the way out to Ingersoll. Other, other things that are going on, the sidewalks are in very poor condition around this site. It's our intention to build new sidewalks, enhance to the new standard, same as our site. As you're aware, we've made a substantial investment in the area. It's our intention to bring this up to that standard and create an open space. If you're not aware, we are big into health and wellness, and this is a wonderful outdoor passive recreation space that will not be exclusive to Wellmark. It's not our intent. It would be open and accessible, hence the passive piece. I don't really have any other issues other than we do. We have seen staff comments regarding the utilities that are present that would remain through this area. Since we don't have plans for construction of foundations or buildings or structures other than that may be part of this passive recreation, we're fine with leaving that easement for those utilities. And we also understand and agree to the conditions that the staff has, has outlined in the proposal or the recommendation. Any questions?
Mike, give me a.
Matt, I don't know if you're this far in your research, but I do know, because we office over there, that Ingersoll is quite high compared to Grand Avenue. When you mentioned that, that connector, that one-way connector to Ingersoll would comply with city standards for streets, do you have any guesstimate on what the slope would be crawling up? I'm just thinking of a tractor-trailer servicing those properties if they had to drop something off and had to exit and climb up a hill.
What, I can't exactly tell you what the slope is, but we did have Snyder use the, the survey data that they had for Ingersoll. We also had survey data for our portion of the work when we did Boundaries, and also we had topo on the site south. They used that information to determine that it was adequate slope. And so I, according to their national traffic, traffic standards is what they said, it would meet the slopes required for. We do know that there are trucks of various sizes that would either, Scotty's has a lot of activity on that road. We know that Eichner, and at the time, a potential tenant would have large truck traffic on that road. We understand that. We also need to take into consideration any fire truck traffic. So that's where we had gone originally. The proposal was to terminate Linden at the edge of what is Eichner's property and not have anything going to the east. Iowa Health was another concern. With the Iowa Health building gone, that allows us to make the slope in grades that we need for what you see here. So at least we've done a test. We wouldn't have proposed it without at least testing it with some engineers who had some data to see if it would work. But this is our intent. It doesn't make any sense to do a turnaround that would suffice for all of those means because it's very large. The turnaround would be excessively large.
It, it may very well be that the one-way runs the opposite direction if it's easier for truck traffic. I'm not telling you what to do, but I'm just curious that, it sounds like you've done your research.
And we're open to, we've talked with, at the time, Gary Fox. We've talked to different individuals just to say, hey, what's the recommendation? We're open. Wellmark will make sure that that's built towards, to city standards.
You mentioned that you talked to both of the property owners on the map, and we just have a letter going around that, you know, shows one of the property attorney correspondence, and I assume that your conversations with them were after that letter.
It did. We have not talked to the, other than Scotty himself. I talked to him just last week. He asked for some more information, which we did send him this detail and also the Snyder sketch that shows the layout of the land over the other. Did send to Scotty this, only with some more detail as exactly what the right-of-way acquisition would be. We have talked to the Bizzignano family and John McRoberts as well. So we've, we have talked to all three, which Bizzignano owns the properties in the corner, and then also here, Scotty's leases parking from Bizzignano.
Tim?
You've talked to them, but is it a resolved?
Well, the big concern originally was, how do they get a turnaround? And how do they get out? How do they get truck access? If we would have originally terminated here, that would have been an issue, huge issue. Now, what we've done is we've created a through-street.
Okay. My question is, you talked to them, and are they satisfied with the resolve?
I can't answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Matt. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application opening the public hearing? Anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward, give us your name and address. Sir, if we can get you to line up here on the wall and.
Andy Burton, Eichner Properties, 3839 Merle Hay Road. We're the property owner directly to the west of the Wellmark property at 1423 Grand. Subway is our tenant. We've got concerns, and our tenant has concerns still with the access through the back of that property. As was mentioned, our tenant gets most of their deliveries via semis or other large trucks. That's the only access they have for delivery. Otherwise, they're going to have to park out on Grand Avenue and make deliveries, which is very difficult, and I don't think the City Traffic Department would be happy with that. If there is a turnaround, as they're proposing now, or an access out to Ingersoll, it should be, in our mind, two-way, not one-way, to give the drivers an option, as Mike was referencing in terms of the slope there, so that they can figure out which is the best way for them to get into that neighborhood. Right now, a lot of cars are parked along that street. It's only one-way. It makes it very difficult for the trucks to navigate through that narrow corridor, and I have the same concerns about, about the access that's proposed now. There are also times during the year, like during the Arts Festival, where Grand Avenue is closed, and if Linden is not an option for our tenant for deliveries, they have no option for deliveries and are out of business during that period of time.
Any questions? Mike?
You've mentioned the need for two-way traffic. I think previously, when this came to the commission, there was concern about parking on Linden. And if it goes to two-way, my understanding is the width would reduce the amount of parking that's available on Linden Street, so.
That's probably a question for Scotty more than it is for, for our tenant, because Scotty uses that parking for a lot of the vehicles, because they're limited on the parking they've got on their, their own property, or what they lease from Bizzignano. I think from our standpoint, it's more of an access question, not a parking question.
Ted?
Would you, if the, if the loop back to Ingersoll were two-way, is that?
Would you, if the, if the loop back to Ingersoll were two-way, is that, is that acceptable to you?
I, I think that makes it more acceptable. I, I think, given our druthers, we'd keep it, the configuration the way it is now, maybe even eliminate some of the parking around our driveway. But we're willing to work with Wellmark and work with the city to get a design that, that works for everybody. It's more a case of just making sure that our tenant is protected there, who's just invested between us and them about $400,000 to, to improve that building.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Send it back, make it worth it, it's a lot more.
Seeing none, thank you.
Thanks.
Please give us your name and address.
I'm Scotty Buchanan. My address is 1430 Linden Street and 1430 Grand. There's a front side and a backside to that shop, which we use both top and bottom. I'm really not opposed to the plan that Wellmark is presenting. Can we bring up the map again of this, of this thing? Here?
You want the concept?
That one there. Okay. This is a better picture. Okay, this is my building right here. Right here, this area right here, this whole section right here is my building, and I'm definitely against a hammerhead or a turnabout. What that would actually do is create no parking for either my employees or my customers. That would actually landlock me. So that will definitely not work, and in fact, when he came in here, I thought that they were actually considering using a hammerhead or a turnabout. But as Matt from Wellmark had explained, that this, this road that they are intending to place in here, for one thing, it's a little vague. I don't know the length of this from street to street. So I don't know how many cars that can actually occupy that street. I still need that street for customer and employee parking, but it will definitely not work as a two-way. It absolutely has to stay a one-way. Number one, it's too narrow to make it a two-way, and still be able to park cars on both sides of that street. And I need that street for both sides. At this time, I am leasing this property right here from the Bizzignano family, but that is only on a month-to-month lease. At any time they can sell that property, and then that will put me in a landlock position if you keep that, or turn that into a two-way. So my real concerns is, and this parcel right here, I see no reason for this parcel to exist any longer. That actually takes up two parking spaces, right here. And then I'm wondering how many cars, once the street's built, how many cars will this, and how far can it be parked on each side of the street? Will they still allow parking on both sides of that street? So this street is a big concern to me. I have nearly 28 employees, we are probably one of the largest facilities in Des Moines, Iowa, as far as auto body repair. I also had another option. If the street would not be near as a, as an interest to me, and I still need parking on that street as customers and public parking, it's not just for me, it's also for the public, and the customers that come down there for estimates. But if Wellmark has such an interest in this property, they could purchase Bizzignano family. I would buy this parking lot at the appraised value, which is, this is about 13,000 square feet, and I would have access through here onto Grand Avenue. On this whole section right here, because this, and all of, all this right here is owned by the Bizzignano family. The only property that I own is just this building right here. I do have an easement that accesses me into the lower level of my building right here, and we utilize that for just several things, detailing cars, buffing cars, and so forth. So what I need, what I'm really questioning is, how many cars can actually still be parked on both sides of the street, if that's gonna be allowed? And, and that a two-way is definitely not gonna work, or a hammerhead or turnabout. Does anybody have any questions?
Trent?
I have a thought that I don't know what it's worth, but how about eliminating parking except right here in this little spot in front of your building? Is that enough parking for you?
Where, explain to me what you're saying, I can't see what you're pointing at.
Where, Linden? On current Linden?
On current, on the current Linden Street, before they take off going on to, you know, or off onto Ingersoll?
Eric, put up the map again.
The other map, please.
Are you on current Linden, or you want...
Just the proposed...
Yeah. The section, yeah, the section that is just north of him, that was the old Linden Street. Before it takes off going up to Ingersoll. That little, yeah.
Eric, from where?
This is still remaining as Linden Street.
She's talking about from right there, you just have your pen.
Where the pen, over...
Right to the right.
Over to the corner there, it's a little corner thing, before it takes off going up to Ingersoll. Is that enough parking for...
That is literally no parking, and I'll explain to you why. Right here, there's a fire hydrant directly in front of our business. Pardon me?
So of course, it's gonna work.
Yeah, there is a fire hydrant right here directly, so that eliminates any parking right there at all. This is an access driveway into the leased parking lot that I am now leasing. Just after this is the entrance into the subway, right here. So actually, there is no parking, maybe you could probably get one car right there, that's it. And I'm just guessing, Matt, I'm pretty sure you can't.
Okay.
So along this area right here, literally no parking at all, as-is. That's why I was asking for the elimination of this, so that it would at least access me two cars, and also, I would need the parking along this area, and along this area. That street will remain empty as it is now, because I have recently acquired the lease of this parking lot. So it's not like we're gonna be parking car, customer cars out there, and when we did, it wasn't wrecked ones, it was always ones that were finished for customers to come pick up. Plus, we park our shuttle van out there, and it's always cleaned up and washed. We always try to present the area as nice as possible. But this right here is only on a month-to-month lease right now, so I am able to keep all vehicles off this street at this time, because we have been able to rent this, release this on a month-to-month only. And what I'm trying to say is that this can be taken away from me at any time, unless Wellmark lists a purchase, purchase as an investment, the Bizzignano property, and I will buy this right here at the appraised value. And then the street is not such an issue for me.
I have a question.
Sure.
First of all, I'd like to say, I don't wanna see you get landlocked, because I still have teenage drivers in my family.
Thank you, Ted. Thank you.
We've, we've been in need of Scotty's Body Shop a few times.
Thank you.
But if, I guess I've been sitting up here long enough to know that we're all amateur traffic engineers.
Sure, sure.
And, and I like to believe the experts on this stuff, versus taking my own thoughts or, or any, any of the other amateurs. If Wellmark were able to get some experts and some city folks in front of you that had, that had your concerns in mind about this configuration, and they could point to you the amount of parking spots that are there, and, and whether it was one-way or two-way or whatever, understand that you don't want the, the turnaround at the end of the street.
Or the two-way.
Or the, or the two-way, but just what, I mean, for instance, if what you say couldn't work, could work.
Sure.
Because a traffic engineer could tell, a traffic engineer could tell you that it could. Basically, if you sat down with an expert and they told you you were wrong about a couple of things, and it might work for you.
Absolutely.
Would you be okay with that?
Absolutely. And I'd like for Wellmark, you know, to, I'd like to plan, I, I wanna see progress. I'm not trying to stop progress in any way, I mean, everything that they're doing is beautiful, but not at the cost of destroying my business.
Yeah, and I doubt they're interested in wrecking your business either, so I, I guess I'll ask, if the gentleman from Wellmark comes up for a rebuttal, I'll ask him the same question.
Okay. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here, just anyone else here to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, Matt, you need some time?
Yeah. In, in response to your question, I guess I, as I look at this, please keep in mind that it is a graphic representation that does not have a lot of engineering behind it. We wouldn't put a tree in the road as it intersects Ingersoll, those kinds of things.
Why not? It could, good for his business.
It could be, yeah, it's greening the concrete. So, but the intent is, the intention is, is definitely, we are, and no, and I don't think, Scotty, you have that feeling, that we've, we've talked to Scotty, just trying to understand what can we do to help. We've looked at various options here. We, we agree, we're not in for a hammerhead, we're not in for a turnaround, and, you know, if you look at the cars there, really, it's intended to continue the one-way road, which, speaking with Gary Fox, and now Jennifer, we'll be working with her, that he said, you know what, I don't like this, or I don't like that, because of whatever was decided and how Ingersoll was laid out. So we are trying to respect that as well. We didn't do this in a vacuum, and that's why we pulled it the first time, we wanted to make sure we at least thought more about this and made sure we did the right thing. And ultimately, it is our intention to create, it's, you know, now, right now, we've just got a bunch of hydromulch on the, on the site, and we'd love to be able to tear that up in the spring and, and make it what you see here. Ultimately, yes, we'll continue to work closely with city staff and also Scotty's to make sure that we're, we're addressing at least, it's not our intent to cause any harm, I guess, not to be, it's not our intent to create a parking lot either, so that's, the fine line is, is that we wanna make sure we maintain clean access.
Any questions? Thank you, Matt. I'm gonna close the public hearing, have a motion. CJ?
I'll make a motion to move staff, but I would like to add Ted's recommendation that the two parties get together and get the experts together and work this out to the benefit of all, because I too, I could not live without Scotty's, where he is. So I, I think he is a great business, a great asset to the downtown, many, many, many employees downtown think that's a great location for him, so I would like to have that be part of the motion.
Okay.
So, sorry, procedurally, I guess what I'm saying is, can staff facilitate that and then, and then administratively approve the design of the, of the loop?
I think so.
So we don't have to see it again?
Ultimately, council has to approve the vacation and that.
Yeah, I understand that. The rest of the process is as-is, but it doesn't have to come back here again.
No.
And we can add that with CJ's motion?
That's correct, that's part of her motion.
Good.
And the council is gonna look at the developer plans?
Any other questions? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Jackered, abstaining, so is him. All right. Moving on to item number six. Request from Waterfront Lodging, Inc., represented by Ravi Patel, for the following actions with regard to the property located in the vicinity of 114 Southwest Water Street. Subject property is owned by Riverfront Associates LP and the City of Des Moines. It breaks down this way, vacation, the following segments of the, of the public street right of way, the north 4.32 feet of Southwest Water Street from Vine Street to Market Street, the north 2.43 feet of Market Street from Southwest Water Street to Southwest Second Avenue, and B, review and approval of a site plan under design guidelines in DR districts to allow development of a six-story hotel building with 129 guest rooms, seven-story extended stay hotel with 109 guest rooms, and a shared three-level parking structure with 245 off-street parking spaces. Eric, are you presenting on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and I'll try to be brief and, and then allow the applicant to get more into the detail. They've certainly been working this out more directly in recent days with neighbors and adjoining property owners. Staff has done their best to come up with a recommendation reflecting where it sits at the current time. First of all, I wanna point out, this entire block here, the portion internal, there's some internal alleys that are already recommended for vacation, and are, should, for all intensive purposes, be considered assembled in with this entire block. However, in order to make some of the geometry work here, they're asking to vacate the eastern segment here, 4.32 feet on the east, and 2.43 feet on the south, and in exchange for that, would be dedicating basically the equivalent balance in a spot on the opposite side of the block. So the block configuration just shifts a little bit based on this vacation being proposed. It's not taking away what the public would need in terms of right-of-way. So from that standpoint, I wanted you to understand, even though they're asking to vacate something, they're also proposing to give back an equal amount of right-of-way.
And Eric, that's pretty critical, because on Second Street right now, there's eight feet from the back of the curb to the property line, so we cannot have our standard urban streetscape along the Second Avenue frontage currently, so that four-footed dedication of right-of-way allows us to get the street trees and everything along Second Avenue, which is a, is a critical element.
And Eric, so that we're clear with everybody, it's not a three-level parking structure, it's actually a five-level parking structure, is that right?
What the elevations were in your packet, so the original notice, we had a different submittal, and it's changed since the original item was brought in and taken in.
Just so everybody's clear.
But I, one of the things I wanna show here now is the configuration that we're currently working with. Essentially, the original proposal proposed the Hampton Inn component on the southeast corner, oriented towards Water Street and the river and Market. What's flip-flopped here from the original is now a extended stay hotel would be placed on the north side of the block, and a, the parking structure that was proposed would be on the west side of the block, with this configuration and circulation as shown in the, in the site drawing here.
Eric, clear something up for me, and, and it's, I mean, it's probably ridiculous, but I'm looking at your drawing, and I could not figure out where the two lines were, the two arrows were with the, the circle in the middle, is that a...
This is probably an island that they were, for traffic around here.
I couldn't figure out whether that was a notation, or I, I just couldn't figure...
That would be the entrance into the, the ramp, so there would be separation of the two different traffic directions to allow for gates and whatever they wanna use to regulate access into the ramp.
Well, that, and so that's what Kenny...
I have perspectives of the streets in terms of photos, if people, members of the commission want to take into account a certain perspective, and hopefully I can provide one that matches up to what you're looking for. Architecturally, there's been a lot of review done on this, and in your packet, you'll see the proposed elevations of the type of architecture we're dealing with. For the Hampton Inn, certainly a significant move away from their prototype. And this is the east elevation that would face the river, the north elevation interior to the block, towards Vine. The west, this would face toward the parking structure as it's now proposed, and then the south, towards Market Street. And then, just a sampling of the way the architecture would look on the garage, this would be the long element facing, this is, be towards Second Avenue, the north end cap... The north end cap, this would be internal. This would be the south end cap. There would be stair corridor here, so you'd have some windows shown towards the corner of Second and Market. And then the architecture of the longer, the extended stay hotel, that would be the side facing towards the river. There's a sample of how the architecture would. Oh, this is the, I'm sorry.
The far right.
Yeah, this is the extended stay hotel, sorry. And it would tie in more to the elements you would see on the Vine Street lofts to the north, with flat roof-type elements. And then this would be the north that faced toward the Vine Street. That would be the south that faced internally to the site and ending Second Avenue. Towards Second Avenue, but will be, you know, obscured by the parking structure from Second Avenue.
Eric, Urban Design Review Board reviewed this on Tuesday, and they asked to have final review of all the materials and the architecture of the parking ramp and all that, correct?
That's my understanding. So, there's still one review before this would get considered, I believe, by the city council. And the city council doesn't consider the site plan itself directly, but there's certainly an agreement involved in their participation in the project, and they would also be considering the vacation still, which is key to the overall development. Staff is recommending in favor of the site plan approval, favor of the vacation of the right-of-way, subject to complying with any administrative review comments that have been provided for the, by the, under the normal administrative review of the site plan, ensuring that all of the site lighting is of the type of low-glare cutoff-type fixtures that wouldn't present a negative impact to the residences nearby. Provision of a sidewalk along each access drive to get, basically, circulate pedestrians into the development safely and not have to walk in through driveways, and then permit, or subject to getting the final approval that Urban Design has proposed in their action. Let me see, I believe I have. We didn't get, I'm anticipating some people here to speak tonight, but this is the consent map. We did get a letter, handwritten letter, based on the previous configuration that I'll pass around from one of the loft owners.
Any questions? Anything else, Eric?
I don't have anything, and hopefully, most of the questions about the design itself can be answered by the applicant.
Oh, we were going to ask you all those questions.
It's a complex project. There's no doubt about it.
Thank you, Eric. If the applicant's here, would you please come forward, give us your name and address? Hi, Bill.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen.
Bill, is this the update of what we have in our?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
It is. I want to be sure we got this orientation. For the record, my name is William Lillis, 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300. With me tonight is Mr. Patel, also Dan Manning, and we have some of the professionals, Gary Hammers, and also Brian Schiffler, who are architects. A little background of the project would be, as Eric has set forth, Water Street is located here, and the Hampton Inn would be located on the south and east corner. This plan shows and contemplates that the extended stay would be on the south side of Vine, the river tracks here, south side of Vine, Water Street, and the parking structure would be parallel with Second Avenue. The elevations that have been shown here this evening are the subject of additional discussion and change. So, those elevations that you've seen of the parking structure would not be correct. The staff recommendation, we agree with, and in particular, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the items, the four items on your staff recommendation, we do concur with, but I'd like to briefly speak to those and then ask the professionals here, to speak to the specifics. Number one, compliance with the all administrative review comments of the permit and development center. They're numerous, and they're set forth in the staff recommendation. Number two, all site lighting shall be comprised of low-glare cutoff-type fixtures. Number three, provision of a sidewalk along each access drive. And number four, review and approval of the final parking garage designed by the Urban Design Review Board. We have had several meetings at the Urban Design Review Board. They look at the economics of the package. They also look at the elevations of the garage. Several weeks ago, we met with the folks, and a lot of them are here this evening, from the apartment complex to the north, the Water Street lofts, and then also to the project to the south of Market, the lofts. Brown Camp, thank you. Brown Camp lofts. So, we've had several meetings to discuss the orientation of what you see this evening. As Eric alluded to, the parking structure here, which has about 245, I think it is, parking spaces in it, was initially parallel with on the south side of Vine, south side of the railroad, in this matter, here. And the extended stay was over on the other side of, excuse me, was, on the east-west, and then the extended stay was on the north side, north-south, on the east side of Second Avenue. In meeting with the neighbors, they were quite vocal, I should say, in a nice way. We had a nice discussion as to how, if we could switch it, can you flip it? The good news, Brian Schiffler, our architect, said was, with what you also see, the swap of the right-of-way, so that all of the streetscape can be accomplished on the north, east, south, and west, was we have a square block. So, we went back to the drawing boards, and then we subsequently went back and visited with a lot of people here this evening. So, we have a different elevation. I'm going to just touch on it, then ask our architects to look at it. This is a new elevation, so the elevation that you saw with the arches, the architects candidly didn't like the arches and the look of the elevations on the parking structure. We have a recommendation to take care of the economic part that goes to the city council, but we need to go back and to revisit and to show how there could be different architecture, honestly, on the, on the Second Avenue, frankly, on all sides. I take a little bit of architectural license. I've got to be careful when I do that, of course, so I've got good architects here. But this would be an elevation that would be looking on, this would be Second Avenue. So, as you would be looking at the structure from the west to the east, this would be the parking garage. And on all four sides, you'd have a very similar type of look. Saying that, the request that's before the commission this evening is to ask for your recommendation of the site plan, subject to those four conditions. We welcome your questions. I'm sure you'll have other questions of us or some of the professionals here this evening. The slight shift of the block, I think Mike spoke to that, is that where the city needs additional right-of-way, candidly, they don't have it, and conversely, where we needed additional right-of-way, we didn't have it. So, it's an exact swap of the same dimension, so that you can accomplish, folks, on all four sides, the 12-foot dimensions that are necessary for the streetscape, which is part of the downtown, in the streetscape. I welcome questions that you might have now, or we would defer, I'd like to defer to Brian Schiffler, who can go through the specifics of the design, and/or Gary Hammers, who's also the landscape architect, who's looked at this entire project. So, we're quite proud of what we're presenting, and we, of course, ask for your concurrence, but we'd like to answer your questions.
Any questions?
I'm going to defer to Brian, then if I could, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Brian Schiffler, Schiffler Associates, 4717 Grand Avenue. I've arranged my drawings tonight in somewhat of a chronological order. These are the drawings that were shown to the two HOAs. These were the drawings that were shown to the Urban Design Review Board, and I hope they really tell the story of the extraordinary happenings over the last couple of weeks, trying to make the two HOAs happier, and clearly trying to respond to the comments of the Urban Design Review Board. This is basically a Google Earth map of our site. You can see it here. Even though the Memphis architect worked with the city staff's three-dimensional model, we actually have put our buildings into the city's three-dimensional model, but it's such a giant file, it doesn't project well. So, for the sake of this meeting and neighborhood presentations, we mapped all of the buildings from Court Avenue to the Brown Camp lofts, so you can see how they relate to each other. Court Avenue, the two Water Street brownstones. This is now our proposed extended stay hotel, the proposed Hampton Inn, and the Brown Camp lofts. Now, I concede I did guess at the water tower. That's hard to find data on that. So, you can see our buildings really fit in well to the overall topography of the street. The big missing tooth is, of course, where the tone lofts are, and they are pushed back from the Riverfront, so we didn't show them in this drawing. This project started out, three weeks ago, looking like this. As Bill suggested, the parking ramp was along the railroad tracks on Vine Street. The Hampton Inn has always been on the southeast corner at Water Street and Market, and then at the onset, the extended stay hotel was at the southwest corner. After our first meeting with the neighborhood group, it was a strong expression on their part that they would rather live next to living units rather than car bumpers. And I've been doing architecture a long time. I don't think I've ever seen a block that's so perfectly square that we could flip buildings. It was something that was simpler, thanks to computers. Computers flip plans for free, in case you didn't know. So, the parking ramp, in case you're paying attention, is a double flip. The extended stay was just a single flip, but it all worked out great. I remember one comment from the first neighborhood meeting, and it was a young lady who said that we were crazy not to put the extended stay next to the river. I mean, that's where the view is. And they expressed concern that the railroad, the 1110, I believe, is so loud that even though we were trying to use the parking ramp as a sound buffer, they thought we were kidding ourselves, that the horns are blasted up and down the tracks, the whole block is going to get blasted. Better give the people, better give the people a view. So, the overall site plan change was a pretty easy one, thanks to computers. This is still a work in progress, but you can see that we've been able to incorporate the four-foot sidewalks out of our interior carport. We've got planters, city requested plantings along all four streets. I might add, just to drop back a little bit, all car circulation is interior. We enter off of Market Street and Water Street. The parking ramp actually exits out onto the street. That was a request of the Urban Design Review Board. They wanted to put people on sidewalks to make them safer and also show more vitality in the community, and we hide all of the internal car circulation, which I think is a good thing, considering the residential properties to the north and south. You've already seen the elevations. The Hampton Inn has remained the same. This is the Market Street elevation. The extended stay remains exactly the same. It's just flipped, so instead of this elevation shows Second Avenue, it's actually going to be facing north toward Vine Street. Once again, this is now facing the parking ramp. I included this drawing because Eric did show this as our proposed elevation toward Vine Street. I think the architectural, this should be the Urban Design Review Board, was most concerned about this, in that, basically speaking, they felt that it didn't fit the architecture of the other buildings. And so, it was a bit of a Herculean task for them, but literally working over the weekend and the first part of this week, it was refined to this, where it's got all the materials of both the extended stay hotel and the Hampton Inn, but yet, it's got an architecture that's more compatible with the two hotels. It's got cantilevered cornice features, which relate to a lot of the buildings, really from Court Avenue on south. You can see the two different bricks. We've got windows in the parking structure, and then a rectangular mesh, which is used in many of the newer parking ramps. Parking ramps have a nasty feature that have to be 50% breathable to avoid mechanical ventilation, and so I think this is kind of an urban chic solution that also handles a nasty mechanical dilemma. So, in conclusion, I hope you see that my developer has bent over backwards, trying to take into consideration the needs of the HOA and also the Urban Design Review Board. Can I answer any questions?
I have one, Brian. Deliveries, trucks, do they go to the core, or do they go to the perimeter on your facilities?
They would go to the core. You're proposing to have our trash be collected off of Market Street. So, this is, I don't have a tree in the right-of-way, but I do have planters on what would be an apron.
I have a question.
Mr. Chair, I have a question of Brian also.
Just answer.
She wants to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Brian, I just have a question about the parking garage, and I just am asking this question from experience. There is a very nice hotel in Iowa City by a famous hotel line that has, I don't go there anymore in the winter because the parking garage is not connected in any way, shape, or form to the hotel itself, nor is the sidewalk heated or any type of a cover to protect from the weather elements. Have you considered that in your design?
Actually, it was considered, but these are previously constructed buildings, which are being specifically adapted to this site. And if you were to, part of the issue is franchise requirements. Throughout this process, there have been requests for commercial uses, restaurants, bars, that would service the neighborhood. The problem with these hotels is franchise requirements are so tight that pretty much every square foot of all floors are, need to be allotted for. There's really very little room for manipulation inside the shell. And so, sadly, it's been, it was designed specifically for this site, but it's a freestanding, independent parking room.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Give us your name.
Yeah, Ravi Patel, 901 Park Road, Iowa City, Iowa. I just wanted to, you have the question about delivery trucks, and Brian had mentioned that the garbage trucks will come into the side of the garage there, but all of the delivery trucks, that sort of thing, will come into the perimeter and make deliveries on the inside of the courtyard area there.
Okay.
Thank you all very much for your time today. If you have any questions, feel free.
Will?
I have a question, Mr. Schiffler, please. Let's look at the west elevation of the hotel.
Well, I have the, with me today, I brought the south and the east. The west elevation of the hotel would face the parking structure.
The west elevation of the hotel The west elevation of the hotel?
It's in our packet.
It's in our packet, though.
Yes.
My question was this. I think you've handled the design really quite well, and the flipping, the thing is inspired. And my question is, here on this elevation, this looks like a really very solid and rather austere wall. Talk about how you've broken up the plane of the wall with architectural detailing, would you please?
Well, the building consists of brick stacked in several different ways, and I might add, two different colors of brick. The whole facade is mostly a fiberglass reinforced cement panel in two different colors with two different bricks. The bricks are banded in such a way to additionally break up the facade and create high water marks across the building. If you were to...
Is that a good metaphor?
Particularly where it's being built, it probably is.
Sorry about that. But this is a big building, and a lot of additional detail has been added. One comment of city staff was they would like to see awnings to make the building appear more period, and as you can see from our drawings, metal awnings have been added along the first floor to additionally ornament the streetscape. So we have tried to break its massing down so that it's not just a big quarter-block building.
That answers my question. And I'm sorry.
Any?
Sorry about the high water.
Any other questions, comments? I'd like to say one thing. I think this is tremendous. I've been to Iowa City and been to the hotel, which CJ speaks, and I kind of agree with her, because it would be nice to have awnings so that you can get in and out of the hotel without getting rained and snowed upon, both of which have had happened to me. But this is a great asset to the city. This is part of the reason why I said the things that I said when we were talking about moving the Water District or the River District back, because stuff like this would be built, and then we'd have to move it back. So, thank you.
I'd like to make one additional comment briefly. On behalf of the developer and ourselves, we have had a lot of conversations with the various property owners, as we've mentioned. We started out, and I think Ravi said it very well this evening, was the project has gotten better with all of the conversations and all the things that we've done. So although we've had people, don't get me wrong, that do not want anything there, or they have different ideas than we do, we've honestly had some great conversations from the developer's standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And would those who'd like to speak in favor of the application, please come forward, give us your name and address in favor of the application?
My name is Mike Draper. I live at 100 Water Street. I own Raygun. I wanted to say a few things before everybody votes unanimously for this. I always like when I hear overwhelming praise of a project before they've heard from neighborhood development groups. But as somebody who invested a lot of money into a property just to the north of this, in a building with units that cost a lot of money, and there's Brown Camp just to the south of it, which costs an equal amount of money, and this is putting a hotel in what is now an extremely expensive neighborhood, I have several problems with the project. I guess we can just look at it, basically. I first talked in November at a city council meeting. Since then, the only real change to this has been that they moved the parking garage to Second. That's it. They eliminated a retail space on the river, which wasn't going to be filled. I've been looking at the same drawings of the same Hampton Inn now for the last couple of months. There will be a red neon sign along the corner, which won't actually alert any customers as to where the Hampton Inn is. It'll only be seen when John McGlaughlin is giving the weather report, and right behind him will have a nice advertisement for Hampton Inn and Suites. The way that the traffic circulates is, for the residents, we feel a little confusing in that Second is a one-way street north. If you're coming from the interstate to come south, you'll come down Third, turn onto MLK across traffic, turn back up Second across traffic, and then you'll try to make a tight turn past the dumpsters, if you can miss those, and then drive into the Hampton Inn, circulate. If you want to leave, you would maybe either go out Market and try to take a right, or you would try to turn a left up Water across traffic, go past the one-way street, over the railroad, take another left out to Second. We had proposed earlier, what we had said was the traffic was an issue in that, as the Patels have said, the Hampton Inn isn't really going to bring people in on the weekends. It's not people who are visiting Des Moines necessarily. It's business travelers Monday through Thursday. They arrive, they stay overnight, they leave. We will have no interaction with the hotel. There won't be a restaurant. This will be the only hotel downtown without a restaurant, ball space, bar. It'll be the only hotel downtown that nobody actually uses, who lives here locally on a regular basis. Before I lived here, I lived in Mulberry. I was right around the corner from the hotel Fort Des Moines, which we used a lot, Jango Racker River Brewery. Those are kind of our concerns, is that the only thing that'll really add to the neighborhood is the height of a building, a lot of signage, and a lot more traffic. So that's one of our concerns. I think this is one of Des Moines' big opportunities, where you had mentioned you wanted people to move down to the river. I didn't move down to be next to a Hampton Inn. And if you had put the Hampton Inn first, I don't think people would have moved down to be next to it, because a Hampton Inn is not a draw for residential areas. Residential areas are a draw for residential areas. And Des Moines may say, well, we want this mixed-use downtown, and that doesn't mean you throw things willy-nilly. Anybody who's lived in a big city knows that Manhattan is a mixed-use district, but there's residential neighborhoods in Manhattan. With Water Street, Brown Camp, Tone's Lofts, you have the most successful urban housing that Des Moines has built. Both buildings are 100% full. Our building has a rule where it has to be owner-occupied. No more than three units can be rented at a time. If you wanted to increase the property values of those buildings, you would put residential along the river. You would have an actual residential neighborhood. Water Street is a non-through street. You would have the ability to create a downtown neighborhood. If you put the Hampton Inn there, you will guarantee drop our property values. You will add to traffic on the river. It'll add no life to the Riverwalk whatsoever. You may have a few more people staying in a building next to the river, but it's not going to do much for you. I have not met anybody in our buildings who is for this, and we're not anti-progress, backwater. We are the people who moved downtown, who bought units, who were some of the first to move downtown. I moved down in 2005, when I moved back from Philadelphia. I've raised two kids now downtown. I run a company downtown. I think about the neighborhood a lot. So if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? Do you really think that there won't be weekend traffic in this motel?
That comes from the Patels. What they said for the Hampton Inn was almost everything is Monday through Thursday. They may get some people who are staying on the weekends, but that's not what they expect.
But you don't think there's going to be any traffic on the weekends?
In the Hampton Inn? I mean, there could be. What traffic do you think will be there on the weekends?
I don't know. I mean, we have a lot of events going on in the downtown area. I would think that that would attract...
People from out of town, or?
Yeah.
Well, that's what Rita said. You have the Science Center, the I Cubs ballpark. I go to the Science Center a lot. I don't see a lot of out-of-town people, but I see a lot of dads there with three-year-old boys whose wives told them to leave the house. So I think there's a lot going on downtown, but I think most of it is resident-driven. I don't think a lot of it is hotel-driven. I would doubt if anybody from Chicago is going to drive here to see the Iowa Cubs play, unless they haven't lived in Chicago very long.
Tim?
This happens to be one of the best convention areas in the Midwest. I think it's even rated one of the top 10 places. Just want to point that out. We have all the state tournaments here in the Des Moines area, and during the fair, you can't find a rope, so let's bring it up.
Well, I don't think there's not going to be demand for a hotel downtown, and that's why we've wondered why this hotel isn't being built by the event center, where the Convention and Visitors Bureau say that a hotel is needed, that they're missing conventions because they don't have a hotel connected to the event center. I think Des Moines has the habit of putting things slightly out of the way. The event center is a little too far north compared to like where the Target Center sits in Minneapolis, and I think this hotel is too far south. You have a band of hotels along Locust and Grand, and the events center to the north. Then you have a band of residential south of Court Avenue. And instead of putting the hotel up by the event center, you stick it down in the middle of the residential area.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
I didn't know if that was support or opposition. I'm Dr. Mike Everly. I live at 100 Water Street, number 402. So I'm on the top floor and will now be looking across at the long-term state. I guess I want to start by thanking the Patels, and Mr. Lillis, and Mr. Schiffler for giving us the kind of input we had. We certainly would have liked to have been involved earlier, but on a previous project here, they just met Tuesday, so I guess we should feel grateful. We feel like a hotel or condominium or something would go there. We're not stupid when we bought the unit. We would prefer something that services some of us, as well as out-of-towners, a restaurant, a bar, whatever. They don't do that. We would have preferred underground parking. I mean, Sherman's got underground parking for a rental unit on Metro Lofts, and we have underground parking, and we paid a dear price for that underground parking. My main reason for speaking tonight, however, is I guess I'm lost in the process, and I'm sure between Rita and whoever here, between the design board meeting Tuesday, which at the end of it, there was a motion made that nobody understood, and it was repeated three times, and we still didn't understand it. And we didn't really know if the money, if they approved the money or not. We don't know about thin brick versus full brick. We still haven't seen what the parking garage is actually going to look like. So it seems like we're pushing hard to accommodate the developer because they want to close on the 31st of January. And I don't think we should do it in a haphazard way, and I don't think the public should be excluded from any of these. So I don't know if the design board's going to meet again and be open to us again. Nothing was really finalized, do you think, on the design board meeting? Anybody have any input on that?
Yeah, the applicant can speak to it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Bill.
Can we answer that, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Bill.
I can try to answer the question.
We don't know, so obviously you've got more information than we do.
We've met with the city officials, and as Mike indicated, the Urban Design Board asked to look at the design again because they didn't like what they saw before. So there are a couple of open questions. The process is, of course, this evening for the site plan, we need to go back to the Urban Design Board, as you'll see in your staff recommendation, and we're going to ask the city council Monday to ask to send it back to the Urban Design Board so we can honestly answer the questions that were posed last Tuesday at the Urban Design Board. So we're asking them to meet, I think the council is going to see if they could meet as early as next Monday, the 30th of January.
Rita Conner with the Office of Economic Development. Bill is correct. And for Dr. Everly and the rest of the Water Street and Brown Camp residents, when staff is working on dates for a meeting of the Urban Design Review Board, we've noted to the board that we will share that date with the Homeowners Association, so they have the opportunity to attend as well.
Okay. Thank you. Mike, does that help your question?
Well, yeah. I think, I have feelings for the developers trying to get their money and close on the property on the 31st. On the other hand, it seems like we're getting out of order here. Until the design board is satisfied with the plans, I don't see why we're here. But I know you have a different function than the design board, so there's been a lot of fast meetings that we haven't been privy to. That's all I have.
Do you have any questions before you...
Any questions?
My name is Peter Percival, and I live at 100 Water Street. I was in Florida for a few weeks, and I just got back this weekend. Yesterday, we had our homeowners association, and I was informed by Mike that this process had gone as fast as a race car. And I couldn't believe that it had gotten to the point where it is without more of our input, formal and informal. And I'm glad that Mike has addressed that. It seems to me, well, to Mike Draper's comment, I came down as a purchaser in 2005, and I certainly didn't expect that, came down with the promises from principle in the city that it would be a Riverwalk and residential, and I did not buy in anticipation of this type of property, a Hampton Inn, without, as Mike says, Mike Everly, the amenities of a hotel. So this is kind of a surprise, frankly. And secondly, it seems to me that the downtown residents who have purchased good property have, through the years, been, we were encouraged to come down, we were encouraged to buy, but yet I don't think we get the consideration as owners, property owners, in the city of Des Moines, downtown, the 50309, that I see in other communities, coming back from Florida, the Sarasota area. It just seems in those communities that the residents are listened to far more carefully, and a project like this would perhaps go painstakingly slow with buffers and other considerations, to make sure that anything that would go on our river would be terribly well-suited to the environment. I see really not much here, at first glance, that suggests that it would be really fitting to this area. This is a once-in-a-lifetime, you can't put up this type of structure, and I mean, what you see is going to be here for a long time. So I think Des Moines tends to be real quick at the gun to, if they see economic benefits, to be quick to approve. And I really feel that the focus should be more and more on the actual citizens who came down in '04 and '05 and wrote the check and took out the mortgages, and have a real stake in this neighborhood, and that we ought to really slow it down a little bit to make sure that the residents, the voters, the taxpayers are really better heard from and more fully heard from, and that we don't try, and moreover, it's not as if this development is on their nickel. I mean, it is in part, but I mean, it's also the result of substantial tax incentives being given. Frankly, why don't we make it a green space for a couple of years, let the economy continue to improve as it is mending, and see somebody who can possibly come in and not need the financial support that this community is offering, which is just going to cost us. I know you're counting on these sales tax revenues and hotel tax revenues, but I sure don't know that they'll ever, you'll ever make a profit that way either. So my fellow residents have spoken well. I support everything they've said, and I'd ask, in terms of process, that this whole thing slowed down a little bit, and more consideration is given, particularly to owners.
Wait just a second, Peter. Wait just a second, Peter. Jack?
Hi, Peter. Slow it down, figuratively speaking, then what as to the residents? What grievances could be met, what desires could be achieved slowing the process down? Can you explain?
Well, I think that whether, I think it's important to have the support of Brown Camp Loft owners, the respective HOAs. I, as a, if I were a public official and sitting behind your desk, I'd really want to have a feeling that my fellow citizens, fellow taxpayers are really on board this And I would lean towards their interests and listen to them and make sure that it's covered. Secondly, because of the sensitive nature of the real estate here being on the river and what we're trying to do with the Principal Riverwalk, the World Food Prize, the baseball park, several other spots up and down, what we're trying to do is I would make absolutely sure that whatever it is, whether it's a residential property, a commercial property, a hotel, whatever it might be, that it is truly in keeping with the vision that was initially laid down in 2002 and 2003. That is what we bought into. When I put my deposit down in '03 and '04 and wrote checks to George Sherman, it was based upon what the city and what Principal Financial Group were telling me, that this whole thing was going to look like. And it was more park, more recreation, more Riverwalk. It was not necessarily, it wasn't high-density type living. So that's what I mean by slow down. Make sure the HOAs and the citizens are on board.
Peter, let me ask you a question. When did you first have knowledge that this project was in the hopper?
In, pardon me?
When did you first have knowledge that this project was ongoing, that we're going to have a Hampton Inn built on the river?
The fourth quarter of last year in the newspaper.
Okay. You weren't contacted, or nobody was contacted prior to that, so that they had knowledge that there was an attempt to have some sort of hotel motel built in that particular location, or no?
There was, what was reported in the paper is what I was aware of.
Okay. I just, I guess I'm just trying to find out what the major rub is here. If the problem is that you guys haven't had enough input, I understand that, and we're very used to those sorts of problems, and we're just, you know, we answer those. But I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if that's the problem, or the problem is you don't like this project, or the problem is you don't like what's in the project, and I don't, and I'm not hearing that, I don't know. So maybe you can verbalize that for us so that we can have an understanding of what the major rub is here when we're building this motel motel.
Well, I think, as I say, I share both, you know, Mike Draper's comments and appreciate those. It would be better for us to have a residential ownership-type structure there.
Okay.
That would certainly beat the Hampton Inn if we could get another Water Street Brownstone or Brown Camp Loft right there. That would be great. And I don't know that that's an impossible dream. But if this commercial entity is going to go forward, for lack of anything else, then I do feel that it's prudent to make sure that the process is very careful and that the voices of the owners are heard and take a lot of, and are given a lot of consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't know whether we're at, yeah, if we, if we can, if you've got, if you want to talk about this, we're going to ask you to line up on the wall. And I frankly, I ask for, I ask for people to, those in favor, and we started out with opposition, so I still like, would like to hear from in favor, and then we can get to opposition if we can. Are you guys in favor or no? Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Those in, those in opposition, please come forward, give us your name and address, and we can get people to line up on the wall and move this along. Thank you.
My name is Neil Spence. I live at 100 Water Street. Wanted to mention, again, I think it's good that there's an opportunity to have input. A kind of, it does feel like the process is moving pretty quickly. Obviously, both sides of the issue are actively trying to provide input. I would, I would say as a homeowner, since 2005, I've looked forward to many of the same things that Peter mentioned, that moving downtown is an exciting endeavor with the hope that Principal Riverwalk develops, with the hope that we get a critical mass of homeowners downtown that make it a bit more sustainable. I think one of the things is homeowners down here, we're somewhat concerned about if we don't reach some level of human, humans living down here and invested in the property on a semi-permanent basis, then, you know, that, that can make all the difference over the long run. So my, my preference, and, you know, we're not necessarily dealing with everyone's preferences here, but I certainly think the ideal situation for that site would be for some form of homeownership. There's no proposal to do that. Wouldn't expect one from the hotel owners. But, you know, ideally for the city, this would be particularly advantageous for the health of the area. But short of that, since we're already here, we're already homeowners in the neighborhood, five, six, seven-year investment in the, in the neighborhood. But one, several things, we particularly hope that the city helps us engage the developers on is make sure that whatever we have in that site is, reinforces the quality of the landscape, the streetscape, the traffic situation, the uniformity and the diversity of the neighborhood that's necessary to make, you know, this, this is really, I think Mike mentioned something about, you know, six o'clock news shot points toward that part of Des Moines. That's, that's where we kind of have a focal point in the city. If you were going to visualize Des Moines, it's, it's a pretty good chance that's one of the directions you're going to look. You're going to look at the river, you're going to look at that, that part of the city. And so I think that whatever happens on that site, that I hope that the board's role, you know, support keeping the site as a strong part of our city development. And I think continue, a little bit more discussion on the design review board's side is probably particularly advantageous. So, thank you, and any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Please give us your name and address.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, Joe Mowers, Unit 501, well, excuse me, 100 Market Street, Unit 501, and that's known as Brown Camp Lofts. I'm the president of the homeowners association there, and I noticed that you had a favor or don't favor and, or opposed. And really what I'm here to do is represent, call it a neutral position, both the concerns of the homeowners as well as any positives that they have expressed, which they have. Many of these will be repeats. The first item is, I'll start out with opposing viewpoints, and all of these come from homeowners as a group. We're mixed in our opinions on it. A commercial, call it application or building in a residential area has been expressed by many people, and that's certainly also the view of Brown Camp. Views impacted. A lot of homeowners at Brown Camp purchased, believing that their view was very unique of downtown, and it is. But of course, there's, no one owns a view. And so that's a negative of it. A traffic increase, there are significant concerns regarding traffic. What does it contribute to the neighborhood? There's no commercial space. It's all external. So what do we get out of it as a city? I suppose, or better, what do we get out of it as neighbors? There's no restaurant, there's no anything for us there. Maybe we could work on a swimming pool deal, but no. I, you know, no one knows what it brings to us. Someone brought up an impact study on other hotels. Whether that's the purview of this board, I don't know. Some residents feel that the hotel won't make it. I assume though that Mr. Patel is investing money in it and so has done the market research, so a concern of folks. Property values, many people believe that their property values will be impacted negatively, and I think you've heard that from others. And then lights and noise probably is a byproduct of traffic, et cetera. Lights from the parking garage, lights from the Hampton Inn sign, et cetera. From a positive side, people feel, some residents feel that something being developed there is good and that it could be much worse. Such as a, such as a bus parking garage? No. I mean, that would probably be a worst-case scenario, but it certainly could be worse. You know, with the best-case scenario, maybe being a park or something. Who knows, though? May make the area safer. We don't exactly have inhabited buildings or a very nice parking lot there, and so it makes some people nervous to walk along the street right now, and having something new there could help. And I just think that it's generally felt that the owner and the representatives have been very helpful and listened to us, which is, the example would be the switching of the parking garage. So overall, I'll address any questions, but I wanted to provide homeowners' input.
Any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, and if any homeowners are here from Brown Camp, I encourage them to.
Please step forward, give us your name and address.
I'm Carrie Johansson. I live at 2801 42nd Street up in Beavardale. I'm not a resident downtown, but the downtown is really important to me. It's one of the things that, watching it transform, as I've lived here for the past six or seven years, it's really, it's exciting, it's been an exciting thing to watch. And, and I really feel like this project on the riverfront doesn't fit with the spirit of having a downtown riverfront zoning district to begin with. The reason that it was put in place is because there was a purpose that they were, that was envisioned for the riverfront. And I don't think that, that this project falls within the spirit of that purpose. And I think that even if you look at the letter of the code that planning and zoning needs to comply with, I think just the traffic issue, and maybe there's been more work on this done that I see right now, because I haven't seen any of these most recent elevations or plans until this evening. I've had a little bit of a problem getting information. It's not that available. It's not always up to date. It's, it's a little difficult for the public to know what's going on. So I think that alone would be a reason to just take another look at the traffic situation in that area and, and to see, you know, at least on that element, if more work can be done. If the Plan and Zoning Commission, you know, had an area where you could, you could look at it again, that's where I'd be suggest that you could take another look. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone else here to speak in opposition to the application?
I'm Maurice Demille. I live at 100 Water Street. I live directly right along Vine Street. And when I bought my unit in 2004, I asked a lot of questions because I, I don't like surprises. And the comment I received was, when I asked about what would go over there in that parking lot, and they said, well, probably a four or five-story building. And I guess I was envisioning a building like ours, Water Street Brownstone, where people come downtown and they buy units and they live there, and they look at the riverfront, and they watch people go down Water Street on bikes and recreating, and that's what the Principal Riverwalk is supposed to do, is encourage pedestrian activity. And with traffic flows that this hotel will create, that's kind of, kind of taking away some of the ambiance of the Riverwalk atmosphere. And that's kind of where I stand. I just see a hotel in the middle of residential area where people have invested quite a sum of money in their homes.
Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none? Bill, you need some rebuttal time?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm not sure we have a lot more to, to add to it. We'd welcome questions that you might have. We've heard the concerns of the adjoining property owners. We are properly zoned. We're not asking for any variances as to height. We have a difference of opinion as to how the property could and would be used. We're quite proud of what we're presenting, and the process we have gone through dealing with the Urban Design Board, and then this site plan comes to you, as you know, for your review. So we'd welcome questions that you have. If I can't answer them, Brian's here, Mr. Patel's here, but we'd certainly urge your approval.
Any questions? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much. And we do agree with staff recommendation. I think we've told you that.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there a motion? Okay. Any discussion? Try it?
Really just a comment. I am going to vote for this, but I do have to mention that I am surprised at where they're putting this hotel. And I'm also surprised that there are, there isn't a restaurant in it that the people can use. I think that would make some of them feel a little better anyway, from what I've been hearing. But there is no amenity in that hotel that is for the neighborhood.
CJ?
I just have a couple of comments.
I just have a couple of comments. I think a hotel like this in our city attracts people from out of town. And when they actually see what we have, perhaps maybe they would decide to move to our city because we do have a lot to offer. And I know I, for one, when I travel, and I traveled extensively, I will seek a hotel on the water. That's just something that I do. So I see this as a great addition to our city. I understand what the residents are saying, but there is never a guarantee when you buy property. I live in an old neighborhood and I fight some of the same issues that you do. And I guess there's a motion. I would just like to have urban review or staff or someone review the placement of the signage so it does not impact the residents. I had someone tell me that they look out their window and they're going to see a sign that says Hampton Inn. I think that maybe if that could be a consideration so that it's not in their windows. I don't know if that's possible. But I know that this site is one where these folks could do anything they wanted to because of the zoning. And they have come to the plate over and over again and agreed to do the things that the city has asked. So I would just like to see that amendment to staff recommendation to have the review of the signage in respect to the residents that are there.
Mike?
Mr. Chair, I just want to sort of get a sense of, the signage is really reviewed separately. It's not part of the site plan review. So I just want to make sure that...
It's been referred to their design review.
Right, right.
I think she's worried that it does get reviewed, and that's what you're telling...
It will, I mean, it is reviewed and, I mean, at this time, we don't have anything proposed as part of the site plan, so I don't, I get a little concerned.
Any other comments? Ted? Tim? Shirley? Will? Okay. I think we've heard everybody else, right? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify... Well, wait a minute. Do we need to break this down?
It's a site.
No, it's just site.
We do AMB together.
Okay, so AMB, we can take up together. All those in favor of staff's recommendation, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. And opposition. Number seven. By the way, it carried. Acclamation, I'm sorry. Number seven, request from Grand View University represented by Kent Henning to rezone property located at 2919 East 14th Street and 1517 Hull Avenue. Eric, you presenting on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
I'll present on all of them.
All right. I didn't know if we had somebody else that was...
No, that's fine, that's fine. I just saved you the question for the last one. Again, I'll try to move through this briefly and let the applicant get into the detail, and you can ask the questions on the design of the applicant. My understanding from a communication today is that they are in favor of our staff report and recommendation at this point, and I'll let them reaffirm that. But we did get one, one card in opposition, and I'll pass around the cards. You can see on the, there's a scattering of green. The one that's red got smeared with the underlying ink of the drawing, but that's the red location when that comes around. I think I'm going to pass this over to, sure. Just, we have to have eight.
CJ is leaving.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. For those of you who are wondering why we're bouncing around here, we're worried about a quorum, so go ahead, Eric.
Okay, no problem. Make sure we get that resolved. Just to give you a sense of focus in on what's really being modified from the existing PUD, this shaded area up here is the footprint for the new dormitory that's being proposed. And then this area here is where the parking would be extended to the intersection. Currently, that's the filling station on the corner, southeast corner of Hull and East Staff's primary concerns in this instance were related to the architecture of the building. And really, what we want to make sure is that we're being compatible with what's already in the Grand View campus. And if you see, here's an example. If you look in the photo, the most recent dormitory is built up along East 14th, and they're brick-clad up to the, except for the top floor. They have linear features, horizontal features, that break up the height. And certainly, that is something because of the story height of this proposed dormitory addition. We want to make sure that we are incorporating those architectural elements that do break up the height. This is a, this is the rendering on the concept plan that would kind of give you a sense of this in terms of scale to the existing building that's on Hull Avenue. And so you can see it's a little bit taller. The roof pitches are a little bit steeper. So we do want some other elements, such as brick, that would break that up and so that it wouldn't appear to be as tall or as expansive. So, but other than that, we are recommending approval of this. We do want to make sure that the landscape islands also comply with what we would normally have in our Des Moines landscaping standards. Right now, the concept plan didn't demonstrate internal landscaping islands in the parking to reflect that requirement. So we want to make sure there's consistency there. Other than that, we're recommending in favor of the proposed amendment.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions? Mike? Nobody? Okay, thanks. Is the applicant present? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
I'm an architect with GTG Architects, 6505 Merle Hay Road in Johnston. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Grand View University. And joining me this evening from Grand View is Adam Voits, Vice President of Administration and Finance. And we'll reaffirm what Eric said in that we are in agreement with both of staff recommendations, the island and the appearance of the building. I brought with me this evening an updated rendering that was reviewed with Grand View on Tuesday of this week. And that's, we've already started to incorporate the suggestions of additional masonry at the base and masonry extended up through the building. Just to share with you, the university has two PUDs, and Northeast 14th Street is kind of the dividing line. So what we're talking about is the east, east side of Northeast 14th. But coincidentally, we are also working on a PUD amendment for the west half of campus. So about a month ago, we had a neighborhood meeting, and we actually reviewed, we actually brought the PUD for both parts of campus to that neighborhood meeting. So if you can imagine from 9th Street over to 15th Street and all the folks that are impacted by the size of the campus there, we had a good crowd on a cold night. And we had a lot of good discussion, and most of it focused on parking. Okay, so for this project, for this side of campus, actually for the east half of campus, we have twice as many parking stalls as are required by code. And the frustrating part for everybody, for the university who's made the investment to provide additional free parking for their students and for the residents, was that the students park on Hull. And so we had discussion that night about what do we do about that? Do we abolish that? Do we approach the city about removing it? Do we talk to the city about maybe making it conditional from the hours of, say, 8:00 to 5:00, no parking? And the bottom line was, the university's in favor of any of that. And we really looked to the neighborhood group to spearhead that charge. Other than that, the comments were all positive. I believe the Neighborhood Association, Union Park, has written a letter to staff in favor of the proposed amendment. So that's some of the logistics of it. Let Adam share with you, from the university's perspective, the reasons why these two amendments are so important to the university.
I have a question. The new, the new dormitory, how many, how many students will that house?
There'll be 160 beds.
So given students, how many of those residents do you suppose would have automobiles?
I believe that the requirements are one car for every two beds. But again, in actuality, and you take into account staff and so on, when you do the math, number of employees on that side of campus, staff, other dormitories that are on that side of campus, and you do that, those calculations, what's required versus what's being provided, twice as many stalls are being provided as what is required. You look at a number of different factors, not only the number of beds, but again, employees and staff on that side of campus.
The number of parking stalls that are going to be, or proposed to be, added, it's hard for me to read. It's either 80 or 60.
60.
It's 60.
Right.
So in other words, there's, there is a problem with parking perceived by residents on Hull Avenue.
Perceived, yes.
At the present time.
Yes.
So with the construction of this dormitory with an 80-car amount and with the addition of 60 parking stalls, the addition of parking stalls is not going to alleviate the problem that already exists.
The problem is one of behavior. Because again, you can go to campus pretty much any day of the week and find cars parked along Hull Avenue. And then you can walk onto campus and walk through their parking lots and find empty parking spaces. So how do, again, from the frustrating part from the university, how do we get our students to use the parking we've provided to them for free? So again, they've provided twice what's required.
What are you, what is your thinking to solve that problem?
Well, we talked about at the neighborhood group, and the neighborhood, again, the university considers itself part of the neighborhood. So collectively, as part of the neighborhood, we talked about either eliminating parking along the north side of Hull or making it, again, conditional. So Monday, for instance, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00, no parking. But then that would require some assistance from the city to, you know, implement those regulations.
The, the Union Park neighborhood boundary is on Hull Avenue. And most of the property to the south of Hull Avenue now is institutional. The Neighborhood Association directly north of Hull Avenue is residential, single-family dwellings. And I think that's, did you go to the Highland Park, to the, yeah, to the Highland, did you ask the Highland Park Neighborhood Association the same question? Because they have but your campus.
They have notice. They received notice.
They did receive notice. Thank you.
Steve mentioned, my name is Adam Voits, representing Grand View University. Grand View's at 1200 Grand View Avenue. Just to add to the comments that Steve made, over the last 10 to 12 years, hopefully you've noticed that Grand View has experienced some significant growth. We have added several new facilities on our campus, and our enrollment has reflected that growth. We are a much stronger institution than we were several years ago. That growth has come from a, from a variety of different areas. It's come from expanding our athletic programs, expanding our academic programs, expanding our residential opportunities on campus. 10 to 12 years ago, there were maybe a couple hundred students living on campus, and now we're, this past fall, we had about 800 students living on campus, just short of half of our full-time enrollment living on campus. The PUD amendments that we're requesting from you this evening will allow us to continue that growth and accommodate that growth that we expect to have in the future. Our demand from, from our students to wanting to live on campus is quite high. We have maxed out, our students have, have maxed out our residential facilities at this point. And that's why we are looking to expand those, those opportunities for our students. The growth that we've had on campus has been intentional. It has followed a master plan that the university has developed over the last several years. And the amendments that we are requesting of you tonight just continue that intentional growth that we have done throughout campus. If I, if I might, I might address your question also. Where Steve was referring to...
Yeah, you have to rotate it.
Nor.
There we go. Where Steve is referring to, where the neighbors have had questions, is parking along Hull Avenue right here. The parking that we would add is in this area. And the issue that we face is that, and that Steve referred to, is we have students parking along here, legally, I might add. And in this area of campus, there's a significant amount of parking that goes all the way through, through here. In this area, we have found that there are plenty of empty spots open for our students to park in, even though they're choosing to park down here. And honestly, it's because their residence facility is, is sitting right here. They're choosing to park legally in a spot that, that's closer to their residence facility than the parking spots that we have provided. We feel like we are partially addressing that issue with the addition of the parking spots here. But then, as Steve mentioned, we are open to other ideas and thoughts regarding parking along there. Some of the residents have suggested to us or requested closing off that area to parking or restricting parking in that area. And as Steve mentioned, we are open to that. We don't feel that we can control our students legally parking in an area, so. I hope that addresses your question. Are there any other questions that I can respond to?
Joy?
I really don't have a question, but as far as parking goes, Drake has run into a problem where they are kind of landlocked now. And they're wanting more parking. And I really think for parking, I think it'd be really nice if your next consideration for parking would be up instead of out and make two, even two stories of parking, a parking ramp rather than a lot. That's a waste of ground. So that's just a comment I have.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward. Seeing none, anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Likewise, seeing none, you don't need rebuttal time for yourself, do you? Okay. Want to close the public hearing? Stats been moved. Any discussion?
Yes, I'm going to vote yes on this, but there is a real safety question involved. And obviously, the university respects that. And I think that before an accident or something of that nature... of that nature happens on this very heavily traveled and narrow street, that something is going to have to be resolved. And I would urge the university administration to consider this extremely seriously.
In answer to that, I think that I'd like to add, if Mike's in agreement to that, that we refer this to Traffic and Transportation for their determination on the traffic issue.
I think that would be wise.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign, thank you. Moving on to item number eight, request from Anthofer, I hope I've got that right, Anthofer Holdings, Inc., represented by Kevin Anthofer, to his own property located at 2814 Southeast 14th Street. The subject property is owned by the U.S. Small Business Administration. Eric, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair. You may know this property, in its former capacity, it was Jim's Gun and Pawn, located at the southwest, it had previously been Jim's Gun and Pawn at the southwest corner of Southeast 14th and King Avenue. This is within the vehicle display lot overlay, which by its nature prohibits new vehicle display. In order for any vehicle display to occur on this site, that would have to be lifted in as part of the same process which put the overlay in place. So what is in front of you is a rezoning request that would remove that overlay. What Mr. Anthofer, Anthofer, Anthofer is proposing is consolidating some businesses, a motorcycle business, a custom and classic car business, and his financing element into one location. Previously, it's involved in all of those things in various locations, and is proposing to reuse this building and put investment into the building to make that happen. In looking at this, staff had to consider the balance of whether we believe that the site amenities were going to be improved as a result of adding a vehicle display lot. And I think, based on Mr. Anthofer's proposal, we believe it will be, in terms of investment in the building, additional landscaping within the setbacks. He already has a site which is exceeding the minimum setbacks you would see on a new car lot development. So, and that's one of the criteria of consideration that the P and Z actually has to consider in considering recommendation to repeal the overlay. And so we believe that Mr. Anthofer met that criteria. Another component of that is, we do want to ensure that this doesn't become overcrowded with vehicles. It is a large building on the site, and large buildings contain activity which demand off-street parking as well. And so in order to not reduce, increase the display to the point where you're compromising the needs and demands for off-street parking, we wanted to limit the proposed display to a 30-vehicle limitation. So that would further restrict, and it should, for some reason in the future, a different operator come in and display on this property, they would have the same limitation. And my understanding is, Mr. Anthofer is in agreement with that, but at this point, we're recommending in favor, subject to that condition with the 26 vehicles. And a couple of these are kind of givens, but we'll put them in for the sake of having this conditional zoning recorded with the property and in place for anyone that would, to be put on notice. Also, we would want to limit the freestanding signage to just one on the commercial frontage, and not, while normally this would earn a freestanding sign on the King Avenue site, this would limit that to the one freestanding sign only on the commercial corridor.
Eric, are you talking about a monument sign?
Certainly, we're not saying a monument sign, but that could be a consideration of the commission. Right now, I believe he's proposing a different type of design, which is kind of a pylon with a base. If you see that in there. And this is just conceptual, I believe, but certainly the commission could suggest that as another restriction. And then also, at this time, there's not an adequate outdoor trash enclosure. So we would recommend that they comply with our current provisions for providing trash enclosure, which would be the masonry with steel gates. Is there any questions at this point in time? He provided us with a petition of a number of signatures, and a lot of these people were actually beyond the scope of the notification area.
Any questions?
We did not have any objections of property owners within the notification.
Nobody in favor or against, right?
Well, I'm not going to say nobody in favor, but nobody submitted and came in to review the, or nobody submitted their cards in favor.
Okay, so we don't have any cards that have been submitted.
No.
Period. Okay, thank you. Would the applicant, please come forward, give us your name and address?
Good evening, I'm Ashley Roger Alstrom, the realtor that sold in this property. And I'm a retired Wells Fargo banker and a financer of automobile dealers for about 30-some years. This property has been, was built, very large, for a particular purpose, so it's in real estate what we call a special-purpose building. And it was well-built, very expensive, and it did not work out for that business owner. And it went back to the SBA, and it hasn't been paid any taxes for a number of years. So in the real estate community, we try to look at real estate properties and figure out what's the highest and best use, or is there any use at all? That building's had bacon for about six years, and a number of people have looked at it. We finally looked at it as a possibility for Kevin's businesses. After we visited with the city, we realized there was a new requirement. And I've been in the community for a number of years, and I'm aware of the desire to beautify and have some controls on locations and of car lots. He is a, primarily a bank. 90% of his cars are actually out in neighborhood parking lot or driveways and garages. He's actually a bank. His own money is invested in buying cars and putting them out on loan. And he does need, however, space on this property for an inventory of cars. So we are asking for this modification of this particular property, only for the purpose of having the inventory that he needs in order to keep fulfilling the demand in that area. I've worked with him for about a year now on consulting in terms of changing partnership, banking, and expansion, and so he can add his businesses into this building. I think it's a perfect fit with these agreements. And he, it changes to the use of the building. And Kevin will present tonight a little bit history on his business and what he would commit to do on the building.
Good evening, I'll make it short. Kevin Anthofer, Anthofer Holdings and Americado Finance, Highway 65, 69 Customs, Amerisycle, and Ameriservice. I've been in operation on 2102 Southeast 14th Street since 2001 as Americado. We deal in financing of vehicles for over 1,500 families throughout the last 10 years in the south and southeast side of Des Moines. It's a regulated loan company, and that's where I think a lot of confusion comes in with, especially in Southeast 14th Street. I'm a licensed regulated loan company governed under the Iowa Banking Division. So we have limitations about what we can do. We're not a title loan place, we're not a loan shark, we're not looking to buy a car for $3,000 and sell it for $10,000, we're not looking at getting 35% interest, but that's not what we're in. We're in to help the community. Currently, we have over 240 customers in the south-southeast side, and that's about a static number that we help throughout a two-, three-year period. We also do family-based counseling, we've done that since the beginning. My background is in finance, I've been in banking and credit unions most of my life. We find out what the need of the person is first before we ever talk about a loan or necessity in that area. A big difference from a car dealership. Car dealerships sell cars, we don't sell cars. We're looking at how we can help the customer with what their financial needs are. Maybe they end up leaving without a car. Maybe it's not a car is what they need, maybe they just need to talk. So that's a big basis of what we've done for over 10 years. We've met with the planning and zoning staff in order to get a better recommendation of how to exceed the requirements for us to move our business there through layout and design for the building. Again, this is just our architect's design of it, which we do like, so I'd like to go forward with this. Setback from the road is more than what is required currently. We have more than that. Landscape is more than what is required by the city. Again, making it nice and making it a facility that you don't drive by and you see cars. We want to be able to see the building. Building visual appeal, as you can see with the peaks.
I'm going to write that down a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry. Doing visual, taking that big 11,000-square-foot building and putting some break-up in there, it looks, it looks more appealing to the area. Limiting the use of a vehicle display lot, we're only asking for a maximum, we're asking for 26. The planning and zoning department came up with no more than 30, which we agree for, that would allow for any kind of growth. But limit the use, again, we're not a used car facility, we're a lending institution. Also, low density, you don't see this on the plan here, low-density lighting, not over 25-foot in height, so that it doesn't shine out onto the street or shine onto anywhere the area for the neighbors. Support the community, we have mentioned that we do have a petition with over 100 names of area businesses, people, clientele, associations, anybody that we could talk to, because we've been part of this community for 10, 11 years on Southeast 14th Street. Meeting with them, learning about what they would require, what they would like to see in, I think we've put in this process here. I know the site plan isn't what we're going after tonight, I understand that, but it's very important to see the visual, to see what we're talking about. I'm going to put money into this, and we want to be part of the community. We agree with planning and zoning restrictions that we have. That's well within our means and operate, and we continue on the southeast side of Des Moines. Any questions?
Any questions?
A couple of questions for you. Are you going to be selling, it's my understanding, like, classic cars?
Yes.
And that's it? You won't go to your lot and find a 94 Taurus?
No.
Okay.
Now, we stay within seven years of current year for vehicles for family use. Now, Highway 65, 69, which you see there as the middle sign, you have 11,000-square-foot building with about 6,000 square foot right in the middle, 24-foot ceilings, what are you going to use that for in Southeast 14th Street? That's why we've been working on this for a year. That's where the classic muscle cars, choppers, we're into.
And that's...
Because that'd be inside, that's a different...
You will display inside?
Inside.
Okay. And they will be limited to customs and classics?
Yes.
What are your interest rates now? What are your current interest rates on your loans?
It goes between 9.95% and 25%. The usury law is 28. Our average is between the 18 and the 19 is our averaged. Again, that's weighted average, so you got people at the 9, you got people at the 25.
I don't want to put the cart in front of the horse, but what do you think about the two dilapidated properties that are just to the south of you? It's my understanding that the owner of the SBA, the building, they're owned by him still?
I know of one. I've had a conversation with him in the last couple of weeks for the purchasing of one of them, but...
Just to raise it?
I would get rid of it, but that's, again, leave it green space. But again, price dictates whether you purchase something or not.
Yeah. Thank you, I appreciate it. That's the questions I had. I just, as long as you're limiting it to classics and customs, because I don't think Southeast 14th needs more used cars, per se, on that road in particular.
Joanne?
I'm understa...
Let me...
Yeah, I'm understanding there's going to be regular cars outside. All the chopper classic things are inside.
Along this parking would be the visual display. If I didn't need visual display, we wouldn't be for you this evening.
Okay.
I can house vehicles inside. The inside here is where Highway 65, 69 Customs, which is a different segment of our business that we've been working on for the last couple of years. So this is inside here, in the middle portion is where the classic muscle cars, choppers. Out here would still be, would still be a display of vehicles. But as I said, unlike a used car lot, nobody would want this, and frankly, that's why it's been there for six and a half years. Anybody with a used car lot would want all this to be displayed. If they're not displaying 60, 70, 80 cars, it's not worth their time. They make their money off used cars. I'm limited use on that, I don't require that. I also do self-financing, not only for cars, but sometimes people have signature loans, so it's not always a car is what a person needs.
Thank you for clarifying those.
Sorry.
Joanne?
Can I recommend your dumpster be in the southwest corner? That's back in the back, underneath, behind everything. And it'd be out of the view of anybody...
Southwest is where it was.
Okay, and you're landscaping in the front. The person that had it before stuck about six arporites in the ground, let them die, and thought he did a good job.
I think there's about...
You'll get a chance to look at the site plan when it comes back.
Okay, so all of that, well, can I recommend that you have...
Yes.
Or do you require that these cars be seen from the street? Because right now, that goes down, and the cars are sitting down here.
Correct.
And I'd like the landscaping to, you know, make the berm even higher.
We have thought about that. And right here, if you'll notice, this is all a four-to-five-foot drop from 14th Street, so as...
Right.
Comes here, you're not going to see 10 of my 30 vehicles in the first place.
Excellent.
That's okay. That's not what, again, that's not paramount to our business. That's why the extra landscape will be out front, and it'll look like a nice facility. You actually have to stop there, I guess, to actually figure out that you have vehicles there.
Okay, and you're not going to leave the building white?
This peak area here will remain in the white. The trims are all going to gray. The lower area where this is all going to be gray block will be put all along here. To break up the white, because I've already ran the cost of trying to paint the whole front, quite high.
Yeah.
With only this piece right in here remaining the white, and all these becoming dark gray, and putting what I call the wings on the front, that breaks up, between the architect's design and our council, that breaks it up really nicely.
Yeah, it's a sorry-looking sight.
It's big.
It's all white.
Big white?
Yeah, so it's pretty awful. How tall is your sign?
The front sign is, you know what, I haven't measured that, the sign here with the poles are already there, with the four billets already.
Oh, okay.
So we're not asking or changing or just cleaning it up.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have one other question.
Go ahead.
This probably for staff. Is there going to be, you probably mentioned this, but however, is there going to be some kind of amendment that says if this, I hope, nothing but success, but when he pulls out, it has to come back to planning and zoning, so it just don't get passed on to another car dealer?
My understanding, the zoning, we would have to physically go through this process again to put the overlay back on. So certainly, we'll do our best to monitor it if it goes out of use, and we will then probably look to initiate a zoning, but I don't think we can build that trigger into the zoning itself, and I could ask Mike Kelly.
Use is permitted, so it would not revert, it could go to another...
Zoning runs with the lay-in.
Yeah, there's no automatic triggers, but I understand your concern, and so...
That is a concern.
We'll be as diligently as we enforce on this corridor. If it goes out of use and becomes a problem, we will...
You can't convention.
It could, you know, then come back to be considered to put the overlay back on.
Okay. Well, I think we're both driving by it 20 times a day, and it works just a couple blocks from it, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please come forward. Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward.
For information, we only got one in mind.
Bated breath.
Since we waited...
Since we waited, Jim Ballard, 4007 Southeast 26th Street, since we waited, what, three hours, we may as well get our 10-minute speech, is that okay? You guys are okay for that?
Right.
No, actually, we met with, with Kevin, and also, I spent some time talking with Eric, and so, the, all the, all of our oppositions have already been voiced, which is the limit on the number of vehicles, and he's amenable to that. And they talked about the low-density lighting, I'm not sure if that's the same as the cutoff lighting, but that's one of the things that's been expressed as a concern in the neighborhood is that the environmental lighting not be there that we've seen with other places, so he's willing to limit that. It's, it's a better use than what we've got there right now. We've expressed all the same concerns, and we've been here and talked about this before with the triggers and not triggers, it goes with the land. We've explained that to him, and he plans on being there, but that's why we want some of the restrictions in there, so that if it does pass to somebody else, it's, it's a livable situation. So, at this point in time, we're in favor of granting the exemption. But I want you to understand that there are cars outside, Tim.
Thanks, Jim.
My name's Carol Jones, I live at 1603 Pioneer Road, and I am the president of the Pioneer Park Neighborhood Association. Southeast 14th Street is our western boundary, and so, it, this business is not directly in our area, but it, all of the businesses along Southeast 14th Street are a concern to all of the neighborhoods over there. We all really appreciate the fact that we have the VDL overlay protection that we have today, and it took a lot of work to get that. But we also really feel like when there's a business that can move into a building that's dilapidated and just really getting run down, that we want to support that business because we need good businesses on Southeast 14th Street, and we feel like Kevin will bring that. He's actually moving that just up the street. And so, you know, and, and the overlay protection is to keep out the people that we don't want there, you know, because we, we already have too many of those. Good businesses, you know, we welcome. And I think sometimes we challenge them a little bit too much with all of the restrictions. I understand there's a reason for them, but I think when we have an opportunity to step up and speak up for businesses that are going to make some good positive changes, that we want to do that. And Pioneer Park Neighborhood Association definitely does support this.
Anyone else to speak in, either in favor or in opposition to the application? Seeing none? Kevin, do you need any rebuttal time?
No.
Okay.
I, I'd like to move this, if possible.
All right, we closed the meeting, and we, we're going to move by committee, anyway. Any discussion?
I have just a question.
All right.
He has an existing built business on East 14th, is it a vehicle display lot? Does it have a permit for one?
Yes.
And will it remain when he's done?
I don't know. If it goes out of use for six months, then the vehicle display ordinance would be triggered, so.
I'm just, just curious.
I'm sure he's got the code on.
I think we should have cooked the trade.
Yeah. Is your existing building up to all current standards and?
Yes.
He's just leasing that building.
And exceeding.
He wouldn't have the power to give away.
Joanna?
Just a comment, Indianola Hills Neighborhood Association, he was at our meeting last time, and we, like the other neighborhood associations, think that this is, this is an okay move. There was nobody there that objected to what he wanted, so just to let you know.
Actually, since this is your neighborhood, you could probably move it.
Oh, you want me to move it?
We're okay, we're good. All those in favor, please, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Me. I oppose all these, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make one comment. I think this is a case where the site plan becomes very important, because we have reversed ourselves, and I think rightly so in this case, I think we need to be very careful about the site plan, get all of our landscaping, so that the next person, he'll have a business for so many years, and somebody else is going to come in, we want it to be correct.
My concern. Okay, moving right along. Mike?
Just a couple of items really quickly. Today, Kathy should have emailed you out a couple of invites regarding the tomorrow plan, the regional plan. One is, they've just updated the website, there's now, there's a company called Mind Mixer that does public outreach, but it's all online, and it's been very successful on a couple other projects. I encourage you to go to that website and share any ideas that you have about regional growth and regional planning in the area. Second is, there are some upcoming public meetings, we encourage the commission and citizens to attend. It's kind of the second set of outreach meetings on this tomorrow plan. It's titled "Business as Usual," and really, the, with a question mark. And it is to educate people and discuss what happens if we continue to grow as we're currently doing, with, with no change in how we plan for that future growth. There are three dates for the meeting, so I encourage you to look at that and attend. One is the 31st of January, the 1st of February, and 2nd of February. And then finally, last Thursday, the tomorrow plan had the presentation from Bill Fulton, who was the former mayor of Ventura, California, came to speak and talked about regional growth. I know Greg was able to attend that. I thought it was an excellent, excellent presentation, and we're going, it was videoed, and it's going to be broadcast on, on the cable channel, which will soon be back to Cable Channel 7. But I also would propose that maybe we take, it's going to be a condensed version, I was going to suggest, maybe we bring that at a 5:30 session for you to, to watch, because it, it was really an excellent discussion and presentation, and maybe Greg has additional comments on it. And the RNO is scheduled to meet next week.
RNO?
We're meeting next week?
Okay, we're still looking for somebody for CIP.
Yeah, I knew you'd get me.
There is no lunch tomorrow.
There's no lunch, I was going to tell you that.
I couldn't help but notice that presumably, one of our previous plan and zone commissions enabled the construction of a multi-story hotel directly across the street from this building with a display, lighted display sign, which is coming in the window of this facility.
Anything else for the good of the group? Seeing nothing?
Interesting. Same thing.